Welcome to the September 7, 2023 Plan and Zoning Meeting of the City of Des Moines. The Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission, other than site plans and subdivision flats unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. Please contact the city clerk or Development Services Department staff for details on council hearings. Applicant will be given 10 minutes to present the request. Proponents, then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Applicant is then allowed five minutes for a rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed, and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless an individual present or member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. Can I get a motion from a commissioner to approve the August 17 minutes?
I'll move.
Thank you, Emily. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those pass. Abstain for the minutes? I always, yeah, abstain. Okay.
All right. Motion carries.
You need to abstain.
Do we need to do the call again, Tyler? You think you got it? Okay. All right. I will now read through the consent items one by one. Number one, a request from Durado Perez for the following regarding property located at 415 East Euclid Avenue. Determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM. Amend the Plan DSM to revise the future land use classification from low-density residential to neighborhood mixed use. Rezone the property from N5 Neighborhood District to RX1 Mixed-Use District to bring the existing retail use into conformance with zoning and allow the use of the parking lot for a food truck. Are there any members of the audience here tonight who would like to move this item to the public hearing? Okay. Seeing none, are there any commissioners tonight who would like to move this item to the public hearing? Seeing none, item one will remain on the consent agenda. Item number two, a request from Walnut Creek Trails LLC for the following regarding property located at 6222 Grand Avenue. Determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM. Amend Plan DSM to revise the future land use classification from parks and open space within development control zone to community mixed use within a development control zone. And to rezone the property from RX1 Mixed-Use District and F Flood District to MX2 Mixed-Use District to allow the use of the property as a restaurant with a brewery component. Are there any members of the audience tonight who would like this item moved to the public hearing?
Aye.
Okay. We will remove item number two and hear it on the public hearing. Item number three, request from Walnut Creek Trails LLC for the following regarding property located at 1525 High Street. Determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM. To rezone the property from RX1 Mixed-Use District to MX2 Mixed-Use District to allow expansion of an existing brewery and restaurant. Are there any members of the audience tonight who would like this item removed and heard on the public hearing tonight?
Aye.
Okay.
Just to clarify, are you against both of those, or are you in support?
Yes.
Okay.
Item number three is removed from the consent agenda. Item number four, city-initiated request to name a segment of 13th Street between Grand Avenue and Locust Street with the honorary name World Record Way. Are there any members of the audience tonight who would like this pulled from the consent agenda and heard in the public hearing? Seeing none, are there any members of the commission who would like this pulled from the consent agenda and heard in the public hearing? Okay. Seeing none, item number four will remain on the consent agenda. Item number five, a request from CS Family Properties LLC for the following regarding property located at 3001 Southwest 9th Street. Determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM. And to rezone the property from RX1 Mixed-Use District to MX3 Mixed-Use District to allow the use of the existing building for a vehicle detailing shop, which is considered to be a vehicle maintenance repair minor use. Are there any members of the audience tonight who would like item number five removed from the consent agenda and heard in the public hearing? Are there any members of the commission who would like item number five to be heard in public hearing? Okay. Seeing none, item number five will remain on consent. Item number six is a request from IA9 Des Moines LLC for review and approval of a public hearing site plan, Silver Star Car Wash, 6017 Southeast 14th Street, for property located at 6017 Southeast 14th for the Type II Design Alternatives A, B, and C, and D. Are there any members of the audience tonight who would like this removed from the consent agenda and heard on the public hearing? Seeing none, are there any commissioners who would like item number six removed from consent and heard on public hearing? Seeing none, item number six will remain on the consent agenda. Item number seven is a request from Timothy J. Urban for review and approval of a public hearing site plan, T-Mobile Landscape Plan, for property located at 4131 University Avenue for a Type II Design Alternative to allow 0% transparency on the south facade and 22% transparency on the west facade where a minimum 70% transparency is required. Are there any members of the audience who would like this pulled from consent and heard on public hearing? Are there any members of the commission who would like this item pulled from consent and heard on public hearing? Seeing none, item number seven will remain on the consent agenda. We also have two items that the staff says can move to consent, so I will read those and find out if anybody would like to keep those items in the public hearing. Item number eight, a request from Electromanagement Corp. for review and approval of a second amendment to the City Gateway PUD Conceptual Plan on two parcels located in the vicinity of 4240 Army Post Road to allow the construction of a new warehouse spaces and two parking lots. There any members in the audience tonight who would like this to remain in the public Seeing none, are there any commissioners who would like this to remain in the public hearing tonight? Seeing none, we will vote to move that. We have to vote that separately. Okay. Should I do that now? Yeah. Okay. Can I get a motion from a commissioner to move item number eight to the consent agenda?
Some moved.
Thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes.
All right. Motion carries.
Item number 11 can also move to the consent, according to staff. Request from Olin Holm for the following regarding property located at 97226th Street. Determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM. To amend the Plan DSM to revise the future land use classification from low-density residential to low to medium-density residential. And to rezone the property from N5 Neighborhood District to N5-2 Neighborhood District to allow reuse of the existing structure for two household duplex residential use. Are there any members of the audience who would like item number 11 to remain in the public hearing? Seeing none, are there any commissioners who would like item number 11 to remain in the public hearing? Okay. Seeing none, can I get a motion from a commissioner to move item number 11? Katie? Thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Motion carries.
Okay. To review, the items that are now on consent are items number one, number four, number five, number six, number seven, number eight, and number 11. Can I get a motion from a commissioner to approve the consent agenda?
I move.
Take your pick. Carol?
Yes.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
I am in favor, but I vote no on number seven.
Got that, Tyler? Okay. All right.
All right. Motion passes.
Thank you. We also have an item on the agenda that would like to be continued to the October 5 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is item number nine, a request from the Airport Development LLC for review and approval of a third amendment to the Airport Commerce Park South PUD Conceptual Plan for multiple parcels located in the vicinity of 2400 Gannett Avenue to allow construction of flex warehouse spaces with updated parking and landscaping standards and to allow use of metal as a building material. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like this to remain on the public hearing tonight? Okay. Seeing none, commissioners, anyone who would like this to remain? Not, can I get a motion from a commissioner to continue this item to October 5?
I'll move.
Thank you, Emily. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Motion passes.
We will now...
If you were here for any of the items that have been heard, you were able to leave now.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
Hey, guys.
We will begin the public hearing tonight with item number two, a request from Walnut Creek Trails LLC for property located at 6222 Grand Avenue. And presenting from staff tonight is Shiroshi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the commission, Shiroshi Chakrabarti, planning staff. I'm going to give you a presentation on item number two, which is a rezoning request for a property at 6222 Grand Avenue. The request is to amend the comprehensive plan to revise the land use classification from parks and open space within a development control zone to community mixed use within a development control zone, as well as to rezone the property from RX1 Mixed-Use District and Flood, F Flood District to MX2 Mixed-Use District, which would allow the applicant to use the property as a restaurant with a brewery use. This is the subject property. It's located on the south side of Grand Avenue, just southeast of the intersection with 63rd Street. It's a busy corridor and intersection with several highway-oriented commercial uses in the vicinity. There's Walnut Creek to the west, and as you can see through the zoning district, there's some F Flood District classification based on the 100-year FEMA floodplain designation within the area. This is a subject property. It has a, it's about 1.4 acre in size, and it has about a 6,700 square foot existing building on the site. These are some street view pictures of the existing building. This was previously used as a retail use and is expected to be converted into a restaurant use. Again, this is another view of the subject property. Here's the existing building. Parking area is to the west, and there's open land and vegetation to the east. The applicant has an approved site plan. The reason the applicant is before you for a rezoning is because they are primarily proposing to use this building as a restaurant use. However, they are also going to serve beer, and as a result of that, they will be doing some minimal amount of storage, as well as brewing on the facility. Therefore, under our zoning district, that would be classified as fabrication and production use, and it requires a rezoning to an MX2 district in order to allow that, as well as a conditional use approval in order to be able to serve beer in that location. As you can see, this is the approved site plan. There are no changes to the existing building footprint. The new thing that's being proposed is an outdoor patio area, which is on the east side. There's quite a bit of natural landscaping proposed over here, and there's a children's play area. Some of that encroaches into the F District, but most of that is just the landscaping and the play area. None of the patio portion, as well as any of the building portions, are proposed to encroach into the Flood District. So with that, staff believes that the requested rezoning would be appropriate for this particular location. It's an appropriate use, so long as the applicant follows the site plan. If there's any proposal to change any of the design, an amendment to the site plan should be submitted. And any development that encroaches into the F floodplain district or the FEMA-designated floodplain area will have to comply with Chapter 50, which includes floodplain regulations pertaining to the city's code. So with that, staff's recommendation is approval from RX1 Mixed-Use and F District to MX2, subject to the condition that any use upon the property shall comply with Chapter 50 of the municipal code relating to floodplain, so long as the subject property is within the FEMA-designated floodplain. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting, as is required for all rezonings. As you can see, there were a few attendees, and they were mostly in support, so there wasn't any particular concerns raised as a result of that. As you can see, this is the comment card that we received in opposition. It's from the property owner immediately adjacent to the subject property. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Just one confirmation. You said they need a conditional use as well from the ZVA?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Any other questions from commissioners?
My only question is more of a process thing. So the pictures that you showed of the establishment were from a little, from a bit ago, because I know that it's pretty much built out, doesn't look at all like that. So I'm just wondering, sort of in the process, is this normally where rezoning would happen? When it's...
Well, I can answer that. So everything about the use is allowed, except in order to do the brewing, and then the wholesaling of that beer that's brewed there, they need to get a conditional use. And in order to get the conditional use, they have to be zoned MX2. So if the rezoning is denied tonight or by council, they could still do the restaurant and everything that's been built. So as you said, it's pretty much about done. If you drive by, you can see the patio's there, and the play stuff is already there. So the rezoning just gives them the ability to seek the conditional use from the Board of Adjustment for the fabrication and production, which is the beer brewing, the alcohol brewing.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes?
Is, can you go back to the zoning map as it is now, please? Is it possible to rezone the RX1 to MX without doing the F?
Yes, that is a possibility. The reason we moved away from that idea is because it's, in order to do that, the applicant would have to provide a legal description that precisely matches that boundary. And as you can see, it's very irregular, and so it would, they would have to go through a detailed survey in order to figure out the exact legal description. And so we, just for the sake of efficiency, we thought this would be a better option to rezone the entire parcel and have the Flood District restrictions in place as a zoning condition.
But it's possible.
It is possible to do that.
And we wouldn't be setting a precedent to rezone a Flood District.
That's true. But the intent of the recommended condition is that the floodplain regulations still apply as though it were zoned F District. So we share that concern, but...
Okay. Thanks.
So, sorry, explain that again. How is that coupled with the rezoning?
So like Shiroshi was saying, in order to rezone a property, there has to be an ordinance that rezones that property, and the ordinance has to contain the specific legal description.
Right.
And given the boundaries of the portion that's zoned RX1 versus zoned Flood, it would be pretty daunting for an engineer or a surveyor to draft that legal description.
Yeah.
So if you look at the staff recommendation, the one condition we're recommending is that the entire site comply with the floodplain regulations.
So we're not getting rid, we're technically getting rid of the flood zone, but we are, we are adding sort of an addendum to the next two to say that it all needs to comply.
Correct.
The flood, the floodplain would still be, the 100-year floodplain would still be in place, and the, let's see, the development control zone would still be in place. It's just that the district would change to MX2 from F District.
Okay. So if perhaps five years from now, they wanted to expand and move into what was previously zoned as a flood zone, they wouldn't be able to do that because of, there's still...
They could do that, but they would have to amend their site plan, and everything that they do would have to comply with Chapter 50, which is the floodplain regulations.
Okay.
In that area will remain in the FEMA-designated 100-year floodplain, so in order to, they would have to do a FEMA map amendment in order to do anything in that area that's currently zoned F District.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Any other questions from commissioners? Okay. Is the applicant here tonight? I'm not seeing the applicant. No? Okay. We can move on to audience. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in support of this item? Okay. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Okay. If you could, oh, sorry. Once you're up to the mic, if you could say your name and your address, and when you are finished, you can...
Mike Spreaker, Sands Volleyball Club, 6214 Grand Avenue.
Can you speak into the microphone, too, please? Thank you.
Sands Volleyball Club, 6214 Grand, Mike Spreaker is my name.
Thank you. You have five minutes.
Okay. Can someone bring up, put up the FEMA map for me? Looks like it's there. Okay. When you take a look at the map on here, you'll notice the floodway area is the shady area to the left of that property where it cuts out and in. That property is naturally floodplain, or, excuse me, floodway. That's where water flows. When Walnut Creek rises, it backs up behind north of Grand Avenue and then flows around that property, creating a floodway on that backside about up to where Pizza Hut sits. You had mentioned that as far as diligence concerned, if it's not in floodway, it can be, material can be brought in and raised. I think to the concern that if you start taking the flood off something that definitely FEMA says is floodway, you can talk to the state geologist, Key Schilling, and what his comments on that would be, but I think you're setting a dangerous precedent for everybody else. I mean, I've got a lot of property down there, and I don't think it's proper to be pulling stuff out of floodway to accommodate someone who is non-happy with the rule that the state has for him. Does anybody have any questions for me?
So in the previous question that I addressed to Bert, it seems that the flood, all the flood restrictions will still remain?
I don't think there are any flood restrictions, because we can, in our property, that area that's green is floodplain, and that can be filled and built upon. And when you look at the property in question, everything to the east of that is green.
Right. Right. The green area is the 100-year FEMA-designated floodplain, and you're right, that FEMA does allow people to bring in fill, but they would have to do a FEMA map revision in order to have the official map amended to take it out of the floodplain. So the action tonight would take the Flood District, the Flood Zoning, off of the property, but the FEMA-designated 100-year floodplain would still remain.
I'm not comfortable taking a property off flood when it actually is flood.
Right.
Anyone else?
Any questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. If you would sign into that white sheet on the table, if you can just sign.
I just have one question. Have you been flooded much, sir?
Oh, at least five times.
Okay.
And we watch the water. It backs up, it flows down behind that property across Grand Avenue, and that's what's all bearing. So when there's flooding occurring, you cannot get to that property at 6222 Grand.
Okay.
It's just inaccessible.
Is there anyone else here tonight who would like to speak in opposition on this Okay. Seeing none, and because the applicant is not here for rebuttal, I will close the public hearing on this item and open it up to the commission for discussion and motions. Commissioners, don't all talk at once. Okay. Francis is moving staff. If there is no further discussion, we can vote on that. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, raise your right hand. And pass.
Motion passes 13 to 0 to 1.
Okay. We are moving on to item number three. A request from Walnut Creek Trails LLC for property located at 1525 High Street. Shiroshi from staff will present this one as well.
Make it fast.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Shiroshi Chakrabarti, again, planning staff. This item before you is for the property at 1525 High Street, and the request is to rezone the property from RX1 Mixed-Use District to MX2 to allow the expansion of an existing brewery and restaurant. This is the property on, the subject property, north side of High Street. This is the taproom/restaurant that's referred to as Lua Brewery. They have been in existence for a while. They are proposing an expansion of their cooler space, which is why they're here before you to seek rezoning. I have some pictures of the site. This is the building. They have an outdoor patio/parking area to the east of the building. This is a site plan that was submitted and kind of shows the layout of the restaurant and brewery. So the restaurant here, outdoor seating, the production/storage area is to the back the production slash storage area is to the, to the back, which is the north side. And these are some more illustrations. Here's the plan. And so, as I, as I mentioned, this is, this is an existing restaurant. It's been there for a while. What's being proposed here is that they are, they're wanting to add some cooler space, and that is considered an expansion of the, of the existing, existing building. And because they, because they, they, in a, they were previously, they were previously within the, they're currently in the RX1 district. And the tap, the taproom and restaurant use is a legal non-conforming use within the RX1 district. And so, they, they need to reason to allow that expansion, as well as to bring their use to conformance, which is why they are seeking the rezoning to MX2. So, with that, staff thinks that this, this request is in conformance with the land use plan and the uses in the area, so long as they comply with all the Chapter 135 regulations, and as long as they seek a conditional use for the fabrication and production use, which is the brewery use in addition to the restaurant. So, with that, staff is recommending approval of the, of the rezoning request to MX2. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting for this item. And here is a summary letter that was sent out. I'll be here for just a minute, so you can scan through this. And as you can see, nobody attended the meeting. The applicant had a couple phone conversations regarding this and received support for, for this particular project. We received a few comment cards in support of the request. Here's the consent map. And that's my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Carol?
Can you show on the site plan where the 900-square-foot addition is going to be?
I would, from, from the site plan that was, I'm assuming after the rezoning occurs, they would submit an amendment to the site plan, which would, which would show the details. But as you can see, back here is the, is the cold storage room, which is, again, to orient you, this would be on the north side of the building. To the back.
Could you put it on the aerial photo to see if there's room there at the back?
So, is there room there? Seems like it abuts the property line.
I'm guessing we'd have to go to the side of the building.
Yeah, to the east. But that's not...
Okay, my bad. I didn't real, this is just a rezon. It's not a site plan approval. My bad on that. So, I guess that doesn't, it doesn't matter, right?
Right.
What the site plan says. Okay, thanks.
And this is, this is, and I should probably clarify this. This is the existing site plan. The amended site plan would be submitted following the rezoning, which would show, which would show the addition. But based on where their current storage area is, it would probably be in the back, where they have their existing production and storage area.
Any further questions from commissioners for staff? Thank you, Shiroshi. I am assuming this is the same applicant as the previous item, and they were not here. So unless they snuck in, I'm assuming they're not here again. So, if there are any members of the audience who would like to speak in support of this item, you may come forward now. Are there any members of the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this item? Or neutral? Seeing none. I, and there's no applicant. So, I will close the public hearing and open it up to the commission for discussion and motions.
I'll move the motion.
Now you do all speak at once. Thank you. Who are we going with there? Okay.
I'll take it.
All right. Todd, did you move, Todd, you moved staff, is that correct? Moved staff?
Yep.
Okay. All commissioners in favor of moving staff, please raise your right hand.
Motion passes fourteen to zero.
Okay. For item number 10, I am recusing myself and abstaining. So, I am handing it over to our lovely vice, second vice chair. Okay, item number 10 is next, which is a request from Starlink LLC for the following rezoning at 1900 Arlington Avenue. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the commission, good evening. Michael Delp, planning staff, here to present item 10. For the property at 1900 Arlington, they have two requests to revise their future land use classification from low-medium density residential to high-density residential, and to rezone the property from N5 Neighborhood District to NX1 Mixed-Use District to allow for the reuse of the existing structure or multiple household residents to use within the property currently with seven dwelling units. Here is the subject property. It contains an existing two-and-a-half-story house that was built in 1906. There's currently 4,153 square feet, a total living area within the building. The total site area is about 709, 7,990 feet, 0.183 acres. So, kind of a small site here. The previous user of the property had non-conforming rights just until last year. With the expiration of the last rental certificates, those non-conforming rights to having seven units within the building ended last year. So, that's sort of the goal of the request now, is to get some of those rights back with the rezoning request. Here's the zoning map, just showing you the current zoning on site. It's N5 and some of the surrounding zoning. This property is loaded, located within the Riverbend neighborhood, just north of Franklin Avenue, kind of around Arlington Avenue and Oakland Avenue. The surrounding land uses are a mix of multifamily housing, kind of in the spectrum of four units to a little bit more than that. There are some N5-4, which would allow for four units also. And here are some pictures, just to give you a perspective of the conditions on site and what the building looks like, just from several different perspectives. And the applicant did submit a project narrative, just going over what their plans are for the property here, and some additional floor plans, just to see where they want to lay out the units within the building. And just let me know if you need more or less time on this. And here are the general layouts. I know it's fuzzy and it's kind of hard to see, but this is the, just the spread for the seventh unit. From the staff perspective on this one, just to give the commission a little bit of context, for the density, the low-medium density residential, that's the, that's the designation that the property currently has. This wouldn't allow for more than two units on site. It would only allow for two units. For the high-density residential that they're requesting to be reclassified as, that would allow for over four units, so five units plus on site. The, the subject property is located generally in a very walkable neighborhood, higher density. There's a mix of lower density in there, too. But it's, it's a pretty big mix of different housing types within there, housing types that are pretty close to the request also. They're in close proximity to dark transit routes. They're within .14 miles of a dark transit route, and community nodes where our land use plan wants to focus more redevelopment and getting some of this missing middle housing into neighborhoods. That's kind of where we're at from a staff perspective. It accomplishes our land use goals to get more density, use existing infrastructure, and get a wider range of housing within these neighborhoods, and just helping with that housing stock. However, just looking at the existing site, it is a pretty tight location, and there isn't much room for expansion of parking spaces. They have current, current room for five parking spaces just on the south end. I can bring up one of these sheets again, just to give you an idea, just here on the south end. So, our, our recommendation would be to keep, keep all of the parking on site within those five spaces for the maximum amount of units allowed within the property.
Just to clarify, they're requesting seven dwelling units. Our recommendation is they have no more than five dwelling units?
Sure. Thanks, Bert. For staff recommendation, staff recommends that the requested NX1 district be found not in conformance with the existing Plan DCEM future land use designation of low-medium density residential. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend Plan DCEM creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use designation from low-medium density residential to high-density residential. Staff recommends approval of the requested, request to rezone the property from N5 Neighborhood District to NX1 Neighborhood Mixed District, subject to the property containing no more than five dwelling units. And yes, the request was to try to get seven units in the pre-existing units on site. And here's the consent map. We did get some comments for this project, and this can just provide a, a real view of where those comments came in. And here are some of the comment cards. There's a mix of for and against. Here's the next page. And here's another page of comments. And there was a letter submitted from the Riverbend Neighborhood Association here to... Okay. Yep, yep, yep. Here's the neighborhood meeting that was held, just some documents in here, kind of going over their process. And just more of their neighborhood meeting information. Some attendees at the meeting.
What is this list?
This is attendees at the neighborhood meeting.
Or that might be the mailing list.
Oh, is this the mailing list? Sorry.
So, those are the people who own property within 250 feet?
Right. Are there any questions?
I have a quick question. So, if we decide not to rezon one, this, this one plat of land, do they have other opportunities to address this?
If the, yeah, if the rezoning is denied, they'd be eligible to seek use variance from the Board of Adjustment?
Any other questions for staff?
I have a question.
Sure.
Why, why did you, why did the staff decide that five was a better number than seven?
I think it was tied to the available parking that they could provide on site to ease congestion for the surrounding properties. I know some of the comments had talked about traffic, increases in traffic and congestion within the neighborhood. It also matches a lot of the surrounding properties for the units. They're in the four-to-five range, just adjacent to the property. So, I think that's how we came around to that number. With the densities, too, for the land class, land's classification, it's kind of spectrum with this small of a property, too.
Now, just add, like, staff, ideally, these old, built-as-single-family would be converted back to single-family. But in this case, it's over 4,000 square feet. So, we thought the, the expense of converting that back to a single-family, but...
I have one question. One of the comment cards said that the Riverbend Plan, Planning Document or whatever, Neighborhood Plan, thank you, said that it should be focused, they want to focus it on single-family homes. Is that, did I read that right? Is that truly what the plan says? Yeah? That the goal is single-family homes?
I think getting the built-as-single-family converted back to single-family.
Okay.
When was it converted to multi-family?
We wouldn't have records of that, but I would guess World War II? When it was converted to seven units?
And it's been seven units since, until the, until...
Until last year, yeah. Like, around World War II, a lot of the...
When, when was the sale made?
I'm sorry, when was the...
I'm sorry, when was the sale of the property made?
Within the last year.
Okay. And then it went, it lapsed during the sale process?
I'll let the applicant speak to that.
Okay. I think those are some of my questions.
Any other questions for Michael?
You made a comment with respect to traffic impact. Was a traffic impact study done, or is there any evidence that indicates that statement is valid, or is it just a feeling?
Well, the zoning would require one off-street parking space per dwelling unit, and so it looks like they could get five off-street parking spaces, so we thought that the five would be the maximum number that staff would want to see.
Okay, but the traffic, there was no study on the traffic, we're just sort of saying it's a function of the parking spaces available, it has nothing to do with traffic impacts.
Correct.
Okay.
Is there, is there a parking lot, and do we have a visual on it?
Sure. So it's right on the south end of the property here. You can follow my cursor.
So about five slots there, and then is there on-parking on any of these roads here?
On-street.
On-street, yeah, sorry.
It appears to be.
My apologies. Okay.
Thank you. Does the applicant hear? All right, please come forward. You have 10 minutes to present. Please state your name and address, and sign that white piece of paper when you're done.
Yeah. I'm going to introduce myself first. Becky Hugh, part-owner of Starlink LLC, and I have a presentation to have here as well. I live at 112 10th Street, Des Moines, 50314. And I think tonight's going to be the most exciting presentation, because we have a lot of people here that is dissenting, and it's a slightly controversial one. So let me, let me start right here. So I'm part of Credo Capital as well, and we're just under 100-unit owner in Des Moines. I live here, I work for, you know, my W2 job is with a Fortune 500 company in Des Moines, and we have local maintenance men and an asset manager that we hire full-time to take care of our properties. And one of them is present today, so we have a, you know, vision of, we're trying to, we only manage what we own, because we do not really believe in third-party management, as a lot of people know the reputation of property management companies in Iowa managing third-party properties. So this is a picture of the four of us, we met at Drake University over 15 years ago. We all wanted to stay here after graduation, two of us did, myself and Jeremy. The other two partners are out of town, but I've been here for 15 years. I'm not originally from America, but I came here and I decided to stay, because I love America relative to where I came from. And these are the two full-time employees that we have. Sheena, she's in the audience here, and she is in charge of full-time management of our properties, because we desire full-time focus on our assets, because I have a full-time job. And we hired Zach as well, who is our property maintenance, as of this year, because we were contracting the workout, and contracted workout is not the best, in the best interest of property as well. So we're paying payroll, competitive payroll for two full-time employees, because we felt it was important for us. So this is a strategy that we use, we buy a property that's, you know, under-market value, we rehab it, we rent it out, we refinance, we repeat. We've accumulated over 100 units over the last 10 years, we've been doing it for 10 years in the Drake neighborhood specifically. I went to Drake, lived there, see the change that's happened over time. And we've only sold three properties to date, two single families and then a recent 12-unit in a different neighborhood. We've always had the long-term mentality with holding out units. Here's some examples of before and after. This is on university, this is kind of the condition we bought it in. This is what we do. We turn it around, we rent it out, we got this professionally staged and marketed. Another example, a different property near Drake as well, before and after. This is a single-family home, before and after. This is on Euclid, we got InvestDSM to partner with us on this to get a grant, and we turned it around to this. So what happened here? So we became owners in April of '22, we bought 1900 Arlington, the subject matter property, as a seven-plex. The rental received was a seven-plex, and I felt there was some maybe miscommunication between the broker and us. It was a property, a portfolio, it's part of a 16-unit portfolio, so the properties next door to it, we own it as well, the three-unit above it, and I'll show some pictures, there's a single-family on the west side, and then a five-unit apartment on, just beside that as well. So we owned the whole L corner of this portfolio as part of a third-unit buy that we bought with the same ownership group. So we started moving out of Drake and certain areas closer to Drake, because the profit margins were not there. As we all know, Drake became a lot more expensive to buy, so we moved into the Riverbend neighborhood. And we have two other properties there as well, besides this one. But this has been the most challenging property that we've bought. It was in bank receivership when we bought it. So we found it very challenging, came with tenants that were not a good fit. Some people in this crowd live opposite, they can vouch on just the amount of noise pollution and just these violations that these occupiers were, you know, just being difficult with. And then we found out just three months ago, when we finally evicted the last tenant in 1900, that we lost, it defaults back to a single-family. But our intention when we bought it was seven units, and everything showed seven units when we bought it. So we've already had the four units on the second and third floor, pending eviction of the two units at the bottom, and the last one was evicted in April, and we found out just a few weeks later with city staff that it defaults back to single-family. So we want to just talk about this, us, we have local management, we manage what we own, and what's interesting, we did some statistics as well, the average rent across our properties is 780 bucks a month, which is, for a single person, you just need to earn less than 30,000 a year using a three-times income requirement to qualify to live in our properties. And the demographic profile of the people here are likely going to be single people, most likely, perhaps a couple, maybe with a dog, and people that just want a quiet and safe space. And our tendency is very diverse, which is interesting. One-third are white, and the rest are people of color. We have a high quality of tenant relationship as well, we try to respond to messages within 24 hours, with good reputation with the city staff, especially neighborhood rental inspectors. Jason Winner was the guy before this, and then now it's Keith Brings, and you can check in with them as to our reputation with the city. And we've been trying to make neighborhoods safer through just better living conditions. And here's the math. So if we keep it a seven-plex, the rehab spend is already 140, which is 100,000 over budget already, just given the different complexities with the egress and the porches and reconfiguration of the inside, it's in really dire shape. If we were to rezonate as a five-plex, it's going to be probably 50-plus K more to reconfigure the walls, you know, maybe get certain things in place, and there'll be a valuation drop of 100,000 just because of the cap rate methodology, because you have less income divided by the same cap rate denominator, you're going to get 100K just knocked off the value just of the building. I work in real estate as a job, so that's, part of my job is valuing properties as well. So we're already roughly break-even to minus 50K on this, as it is to just get the job done. It will be even more in the hole, and we are highly considering the alternative is giving it back to the bank. I mean, that is a very viable option, and I really don't know, unless the bank auctions it off for free, whether anyone else is going to buy this, in its current zoning state, just just an FYI. That's the no-go situation. The go situation is to try to remain density and finish the project. Here's some pictures of acquisition. It looks a lot worse than this, because the tenants, you know, they covered it up, but here's what it looks like with all the junk removed. There's little or no historical preservation in there, it's been converted since World War II, it's, nothing really historical preserved in these units. Here's how it looks like right now, the bottom-floor units with those tenants that got evicted. Here is the two units, the four units above that we've already done work, too. And this is 1908, which is a different property just north of this, it's a triplex, there was a condition units inside, now they are like that, and it's fully rehabbed and it's leased out to three qualified tenants that live there right now. This is the five-unit that's two doors down before, and this is how we staged this one after. Some more pictures, and this is a property that's 1621 9th Street, it's in the Riverbend District. This is the before pictures, after. 1908 is also in the Riverbend District, single-family home, before, after. So here, I mean, we talked about, the city, you know, gave about, gave, you know, reason why this should be, you know, kept as a five. I mean, we're trying to go for seven, because we bought it as a seven, but it's very walkable, there's many things surrounding it, the Central Trails Initiative, the bus route on Sixth Corridor, the YMCA is being revamped, we know what's happening in the neighborhood. Here's just a clearer picture of it. So we have five spots right now, but to Chris's point, I mean, we're willing to do a traffic study to see even whether this is obstructing any traffic. There is opportunity for street parking for at least two more cars, because I parked there many times as well, and we own those three properties right next to it. That whole plot belongs to us. There's an apartment building across the street, there's an apartment building right there on the south side of Franklin Avenue as well. So I'll leave it up here and take any questions.
Are there any on-street parking restrictions, like, where can you not park on the street around here?
I am not sure, because when I've been there, there are five spots, like, south of the building, and I park all the way up north, even next to 1908, which is the property with the heart shape just north of it.
I mean, can you, you can park on Franklin, you can park on Arlington, can't you?
I don't think you can park on Franklin right there.
I think it's only on one side, on both of those.
It's the north side of Franklin?
The north side of Franklin and the west side of Arlington, right?
I know we can park right here, this, this site right here is available for parking.
So to say that there's, you know, at least two spaces of on-street parking is probably more than fair, if not to say, there's probably at least, I don't know, 20 within, like, right by the streets. So like, the parking thing seems like a bit of a red herring piece, isn't it, reasonably?
My name's Michael Wayther with Oracle Consulting, I'm a consulting engineer for Starlink. We understand that this rezoning will trigger the site plan ordinance, and so we're not really voting on any site plans or anything tonight, but if it were to be rezoned and we were to move on to the site plan ordinance, I would do a full site plan to come up to Chapter 135, all landscaping, bulk regulations, parking, all those things would have to be shown, otherwise we would have to go for variance or something from Board of Adjustments. So in your consideration of the request for seven, five, or what we do to rezone this, just know that we will have to, again, come in front of staff and show that everything is conforming to Chapter 135, and that we're with the site plan that as a professional engineer I will sign, and make sure ADA and thoroughfares for the ADA are all workable and walkability of the sidewalks, all the things that staff normally makes us do, we will address those, because as ordering ordinance, the rezoning will trigger the site plan ordinance, so.
Will this property be required to have one on-property parking spot per unit? Yes, okay.
Is there a type-one design alternative that is potentially able to address that?
Yeah, any of the parking regulations are eligible for type-one administrative design alternatives, and if staff doesn't grant those, then the site plan would be brought back to this commission for type-two design alternatives.
I have a question. Is it a condition of tenancy to own a car?
No, they don't have to own a car. I mean, if they want to walk, I mean, the bus route is...
How about a follow-up?
Yes.
Is the basement available to provide as a bike room?
Yeah, there is a pretty good, so it's 4,000 square feet across, I think there's at least 1,000 square feet in the basement to add room for bicycles, and we'll probably need a bike rack outside as part of the site plan, I'm not sure.
Well, the reason I ask is, right across the street, the multifamily, there were three bikes parked there yesterday or the day before outside, and that's fine in the summer, if you live there, but if you, if you bike in the winter, you don't want to park your bike outside. So I'm wondering if you can be maybe proactive on the bike thing, a little bit more bike-friendly, if you provide a secure bike room in the basement?
Absolutely. Definitely consider that, for sure.
Okay. So, excuse me, I'm sorry. With your experience, how is it that you got to a point where you invested so much money only to learn just three months ago?
Well, we bought it thinking we just needed to get the rental certificate back in order, but then through that process, we found out that we had to be appalled, because it defaults back to a single-family. Eric Lundey was involved, yeah, so he generated a zoning termination letter during that time, and he determined that it reverted back to single-family because of a lapsed rental certificate that was lapsed before our ownership, but we didn't find out until later. So this is my first rodeo standing in front of all of you, because we always buy properties with current rental certificates, and I've learned my lesson, absolutely. And this is scary in a sense that it's an economic decision, the Riverbend neighbors here are very, very passionate about their neighborhood. I've spoken to them in a neighborhood meeting setting for over two hours, answering their questions, so they've heard this pitch before. I attended the Neighborhood Association meeting that was last week, and I can see just the future of Riverbend being a really great neighborhood, because of such passionate and evolved people. So I see a great future for this area, for sure, given all the initiatives happening, Sixth Avenue Corridor, we own the building that's on 9th Street, we see the change, it's opposite a correctional facility, and it's quiet there, surprisingly, you know, because we bought it, we weren't sure. And honestly, as an investor, we would not buy things that won't create us a profit margin, because why would we do that? We're a for-profit company, and we do good through what we've done so far.
Well, I appreciate that statement, considering I've been 24 years invested in Riverbend, just down the street from one of your properties, so, thank you. Well, go ahead.
I have a follow-up to that question. When you, you said that you rehabbed the four units on the upper floors of the building, was a building permit required when you did that work?
There was nothing interior-wise that were moving any walls or changing any structure, so generally, if you don't do any of that changing of structure, you don't need a permit to be pulled. It's an aesthetic appeal, really, and the city can confirm that.
Did you, did you request of the city any information about that, since you were planning on doing a major rehab on the building? When you, you know, when you took title to the building, did you inquire in the city what the status of the building is? I'm asking because, you know, it's, it is a reflection.
Yeah, so I literally did not know that a lapsed rental certificate triggers a rezoning. Like, in the Drake neighborhood, it's, maybe it was enacted in the last couple of years, we're not sure, but we've always bought something with a rental certificate that's active, and it's a big lesson learned, because normally that does trigger some zoning issue, which we found out unfortunately in this case. So we never had that issue come, because that's a question that people have asked me, it's like, why didn't you do that? I'm like, well, we didn't, if we knew, we wouldn't have purchased this whole chunk of portfolio, we would not have done it, to be honest. We just happened to stumble into this mistake, and maybe to the neighborhood's, you know, delight, or not, it's finally changing. I think we got the most notorious tenant out in April, and some of them here could vouch for that. Like, he was blasting music all times of the day, and he was, he was, you know, probably doing illegal things in the unit, he was not good, but we got him out.
Yeah, I just, so if anyone, so if they decide this is not economically feasible, and it sounds like, you know, in your opinion, a single-family unit is not, someone else would have to buy it and turn it into a single-family, because this is not zoned for anything else. So, okay, I'm just making sure that I have all of that accurate.
Yeah, it's zoned N5 right now, which is a one-household residential district.
How, what is the bed and bath count? And you term it as affordable, and your average rents certainly appear to be affordable. Do you get, like, HUD or Section 8 or anything like that support in your...
I mean, we do have a mix in our current 100 units, we have, we don't seek that out, per se, to be candid, but if it came, if the tenants came with the building, a Section 8 tenant, we have a couple of Section 8 tenants right now, and they are different Section 8 tenant, we have a couple of Section 8 tenants right now, and they have different regulations with having Section 8 tenants, right? As long as they adhere to our lease agreement and maintain peace, we're okay keeping them, absolutely. Is one-on-one, one bed, one bath per unit?
All of them.
All of them, seven units, correct.
A question. What are the standards being followed with your counterparts that have similar layouts on the street?
What do you, what do you mean by that?
Yeah, so, uh, your current facility that you have to the left on this picture, what, what is the apartment count and then?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
So the one next door, 315 Franklin, is a single-family. It's a three-bed, one-and-a-half-bath. There's a family of, I think, four lives there. They came with the building. We've kept them with the building, just to help with cash flow, because 1900 has been, uh, the tenants that came with it has been paying zero rent since we bought the building in April. So we had to evict them on terms of non-payment and violation of just lease agreement. And then the one next door, that other heart right there, is 319 Franklin, is a five-unit apartment. And I think I had some pictures, um, let me see, this one. So this is current layout of that property. We had a BB gun issue where the tenant that was in 1900 apparently moved across the street, and suddenly, all of a sudden, our windows started getting broken by BB gunshots, and the police cannot do anything about it. It was vacant, and now we're getting it leased out. The two units at the bottom is getting leased out, um, and the three units above hopefully be leased out. And it's also a price issue. Like we're trying to charge, you know, low 700 per unit, but the neighborhood somehow doesn't command that kind of rents even, to be honest, right now. So, we got to take what the market gives.
The one, this one on Franklin, that started life as a single-family home?
No, we bought it as a five-plex. It came with a rental certificate that was...
But was it built as a single-family home?
Probably, back in the day.
But it did not trigger the same lease violation when you bought it?
Correct, because this had an active rental certificate.
Okay.
Yep, that was a very fine line.
So, just for clarification, because you were able to buy it with the active certificate, the standard will stay the same?
Yes, legally non-conforming, correct.
All right.
So this one's an N5 as well.
And the main reason you're here for us today is because the purchase didn't happen soon enough and you missed the standard? I mean, you missed the, the filing deadline to keep the certificate going forward, correct?
Pretty much.
Okay, and...
It sounds like it had maybe already lapsed before you bought it. Is that right?
Yeah, it lapsed before we bought it. We were unaware.
Okay.
Yep, we were unaware.
But your intentions was to buy this property as a seven?
As a seven, absolutely, absolutely. That's what we do.
Yep, thank you.
If I bought this as a single-family, I wouldn't be here today. I would have done the math in that, in that case. I'm just being very frank with...
One more thing. You, you are currently on, your, how many properties do you own?
Ninety-nine units across 20 buildings.
Do you have any complaints or against any of these properties that you know?
I'm sure the crowd would, would voice against, I, I am biased towards my own buildings, of course. So, no.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, let's, uh, let's hear from the audience. Thank you. You'll have another chance to rebut once we hear from everybody. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this project? I assume there are a few opposed. Please, please come forward, state your name, address, and sign in when you're finished, please. You have five minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Uh, my name is Chad Nelson. I live at 1236 Ninth Street in the Riverbend neighborhood. And not for nothing, it was seven apartments, and it's been converted into a single-family home. Um, I am here on behalf of the Riverbend Neighborhood Association, of which I am a board member. We have written a letter, and I will read that letter. It was in a presentation earlier from the staff.
Can I log in? Then you should be able to pull that up on the screen.
Oh, I need to read that.
Okay.
Just need to unlock the computer.
Can you put the, um, presentation back up that has the letter?
I can just do it from here.
Okay. Am I okay, see?
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the Riverbend Neighborhood Association is opposed to rezoning the house at 1900 Arlington to NX1. This is a decision we have come to after many discussions with the property owners, our neighbors, and among our board. We firmly believe that the zoning ordinances, ordinances were put in place for a reason and urge you not to go against the City de Moines Municipal Code and the Plan DSM Comprehensive Plan. For decades, residents of Riverbend have fought to stabilize the neighborhood and improve quality of life so everyone has an environment in which they can thrive. Density reduction in formerly redlined neighborhoods is one very good tool we have for stabilizing our urban neighborhoods. This is the reason the zoning ordinances in neighborhood districts that exist now were established after countless hours of discussion and planning put in by so many, including residents of Riverbend. The area in question is already supporting a number of multifamily homes and apartments and has, in recent past, been an area of concern. While it is important to have housing stock, clustering this much density in an area that was not created to support that density only causes issues in a neighborhood struggling to achieve the kind of success that is easier in low-density designated zones. Do not force an underserved neighborhood to carry the burden of solving a metro-wide housing crisis. Our concern for this particular property is that once rezoned, it is very unlikely that would ever return to use as a single-family home, which is its original intended use. The owners of the property have made it clear to us that their decisions are based on financial analysis and profit margins. As a neighborhood, we will be dealing with the consequences of this rezoning long after their need for profit has dictated that they sell this property. Once it is sold, we will have no recourse if the next landlord wishes to drag our neighborhood down with unneighborly practices. This corner will be lost. We are not opposed to medium and high-density housing where appropriate. As an association, we have a history of supporting high-density developments and look forward to how both new, new and restoration projects on our Sixth Avenue Corridor will bring residents to our neighborhood and foster business growth. Furthermore, there are other properties in this neighborhood that were designed and built for multifamily use. Some of these units sit on the public nuisance property list awaiting rehabilitation. We believe the neighborhood would benefit more if developers, developers focused their efforts on these properties. Please do not make the neighborhood bear the responsibility for the errors of landlords and corporations. Riverbend neighbors urge you to maintain the very purposeful and reasonable N5 zoning at 1900 Arlington. Thank you.
Can we ask questions? Is it, are there any standards or restrictions or commitments that a landlord could provide that would give you the confidence that this property would be useful for the neighborhood?
I am here as a represent, representative of an entire board. Um, I'm not authorized, I believe. We have two other board members, I believe. I'm correct in saying that I'm not comfortable answering any questions on behalf of the board?
Can you answer them on behalf of you?
Oh, gladly. Say it again.
Are there any restrictions, commitments, anything that a landlord could do that would make you, um, comfortable that this property, high-density, would be appropriately managed?
In my opinion, as a resident of the neighborhood, not as a board member, no. Um, I am a preservationist. I sit on the Historic Preservation Commission. Um, I believe that a single-family home that was built as a single-family home needs to maintain itself as a single-family home, especially in the neighborhood. It sits in a historic district. It is a contributing structure to the whole historic district. I think it needs to go back to single-family.
Okay, so there's really nothing that any landlord could do that would allow this to be multifamily from your perspective?
From personally, my perspective, no.
Your personal, okay.
No.
You mentioned redlining with the implication of bringing this back to single-family will increase equity is what I assume the relationship is. What is the logic of a house this size being single-family increasing equity within this neighborhood?
Uh, increasing equity not only means providing low-income houses, it means providing housing for everybody. So having a diverse economic, um, neighborhood, you know, people from varying stratifications of income is just as important as focusing on any one particular group of income. We have, you know, plenty of houses in, um, apartment complexes that can host a wide variety of income sources. So this house is just, should be a house.
Was, did they, did, did someone, could someone who wanted to re, return the house to a single-family configuration, could, could they have bought it? Was it, did someone give you the house? So, so the market in, you know, the last year, the, the house sold for probably not very much money as a, as a multifamily, right? And so the, my question is, if it wants to be converted to a single-family, how come nobody bought it?
I was under the impression that it was sold as part of a portfolio of properties, so they would have to have bought all of the properties in that portfolio. Um, I don't think that a person who wants to buy one house would want to buy three properties at once.
And to Chris, remember that one landlord can be perfect, but that house can always be sold, and our rezoning stays with that land and not the person.
That's our primary concern.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not arguing that point. I'm just curious if the position is that there's no landlord is appropriate for this, number one, and number two, that we're saying that, you know, the redlining issue, as I understood it, was preventing individuals of certain types from being able to achieve access to a house, and now we're saying I'm going to have to have a massive amount of money to convert this house. I'm not sure I see the logic there of how this is righting the wrong of a redlining ill.
I, I think redlining was more along the lines of banks not giving money to houses because of the types of people who are currently living in that neighborhood.
Yeah, we, we didn't want to give mortgages to black people. I mean, that's the basic gist of it, right?
And renters and Italians and...
Yeah, cool, okay. But I, I just don't, I, I just think the, calling that out in this seems like a disingenuous argument for this. I mean, to, to bring back a 4,000-square-foot single-family home to right that wrong doesn't seem like a good argument. It doesn't seem like a fair argument.
Well, I mean, the neighborhood has felt the effects of redlining since redlining was instituted. I mean, we're still struggling with those ramifications today. I think it's perfectly valid to bring it up.
We'll just have to differ on cause and effect there.
Okay, thank you. Please do sign in before you sit down. Um, anyone else in the audience? Please state your name, address, and sign in when you're finished. You do have five minutes as well.
Thank you. My name is Diana Rezak, and I live at, um, 1917 Arlington. So every day I look at this property, which, um, I've had the opportunity to look at a vacant stool sitting out in the yard for days and days. I am not in favor of this property changing. I believe this area of the neighborhood is saturated with rental. From my driveway, I could look at 1824 Arlington, which was originally built as a one-family. It now holds two. Then there's 1900, which they want to make seven. 1908 was originally built as a one-family. It holds three. And 1930 Arlington has four, and 235253 Franklin was the only one that was built as rental. That corner has 24 units. That is my neighbor to the left. So we have four houses that I look at every day that were originally built to be one-family homes. If you approve seven, those four houses will hold 16 units. That's 16 people at least. Let's face it, in Des Moines, Iowa, to have most jobs, you have to have a car. So there's parking, there's litter, there's traffic. And if you're not aware, on Arlington, you go from Sixth to Second Avenue, and we are a cut-through. As far as traffic, there's traffic problems. The last property, when it was seven, a couple of the residents were always parking on the street. I believe in low-income housing. I worked in the nonprofit world for over 10 years for NFC and for Home, Inc., both of which provide low-income housing and housing. That was accepted by our neighborhood. We are not against low-income housing, but we do want to have a neighborhood we're proud of. And so that is why I thank you for the time. Any questions?
What's the issue with street parking? Like, why isn't street parking allowed, or why isn't it preferred? What's, I mean, what's the issue with parking on the street?
I don't know that. The parking has been the way it has been. I will tell you that the light pole in front of my house has been knocked out three times by drunk driving. People speed through there, especially at night. And the way the property is set up now, it's set up for five spaces, but sometimes you have a couple that both have cars, and you don't have enough parking there.
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to cur, like, what's, what's the opposition to parking on the street? Why is, I mean, there's plenty of ability to park on the street. I live in Drake neighborhood. I don't even have off-street parking. So I'm just curious. What's the issue with?
Well, if you would go down the street of Arlington, you will be surprised to how much rental there is on the opposite riverside. And if there's more than one person, more than one cup, person, they may each have their own car.
I think Chris is trying to ask what the problem is with having people just park on the street.
I mean, there's parking spaces all on the street, yeah.
Because there's not enough, and there's, the traffic's too fast.
Studies would indicate if we actually reduce the distance between, that we can drive down, it actually reduces the speed of traffic. So we should be increasing safety if we do have more parking on the street. Isn't that also a meaningful argument?
If the car doesn't get hit.
Well, actually, it sounds like you get a buffer from the light pole.
Right. Any other question?
I have a question. I, I have a question, please.
Yes.
Could you live and be satisfied, uh, by supporting the city staff recommendation for five units?
No, because I am surrounded by rental. And I have no other choices than those other houses, because they've been there forever and have kept their certificates up. And we're not even discussing what those houses look like from the outside. We're just talking basically about the inside and how many people are there.
Given the sale price of this was 735, oh, $715,000, I mean, do you really think that this house is going to actually have someone come in and bring it back to single-family? What's the, I mean, if this goes away and goes back to the bank, what's the chance of that actually?
Yeah, right. Keep...
715 is a full portfolio, okay.
Okay.
How much do you think?
I don't know, but my, my taxes are, my house is assessed at over 300,000, and I am right across the street. I wish I brought my tax assessment in, and that's even after I'm 65. So I, the properties, if you look at the properties, the large houses that have been redone, because this is the second house I've redone. I've done one in Sherman Hill. And it's ridiculous how your taxes go up. And every time a house sells, your taxes go up.
Thank you, Diana.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to this item? Again, name, address, five minutes. Sign in when you're done.
My name is Ben Spade. I'm at 1934 Arlington. Um, good evening. A, a couple points of clarification. On the Credo Capital website, as one of the rental requirements, it says no government assistance is allowed. Um, I guess I can do that after the fact. And then, I moved to Riverbend in October of 2021 by choice because I wanted a house with a little character, and it was the most house I could get for what I could afford. Um, and then, when I look at the land use goal number two for Plan DSM, it talks about direct new growth and redevelopment to areas with existing infrastructure, so on and so forth, I sort of see that as me and not just another plug-and-play landlord that's going to maintain the property just to get by. Um, the exterior pictures we looked at earlier are current, um, and as of yet, there's no major plans to do anything to the exterior. plans to do anything to the exterior, which is true of almost all rentals there because of the historical neighborhood aspects we have where you have to go in front of the board to get those approved. So a lot of absentee landlords or just landlords in general don't do a whole lot. Those that care about the neighborhood do. And absent seeing that, it just doesn't feel currently like there's anything a landlord could say to me, but I'm not saying no. I think that, yes, there could be something that could be said to convince me that, you know, this could remain a rental, but as, as of right now, I don't think it should. I think it should be a single-family. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. I have a question. I don't think it's for Ben. The question is, so this particular piece of property will have to go through a site plan review, correct? So can you kind of summarize what exterior improvements will be required?
Well.
This one will be a little different in that it does have to have some of those.
Sure. With the site plan, the site plan really is going to look more at the site layouts like off-street parking, sidewalks, landscaping, screening, dumpster enclosures, things like that. But this is in the Riverbend Local Historic District, so any external modifications will have to meet the design standards for a local historic district.
So if any windows need to be replaced, they need to be done, wood windows, you can't replace with vinyl, things like that. So there's a number of things that, in looking at those pictures, that it would be nice to see somebody that, you know, takes care of the property, likes the neighborhood, that sort of thing, would make those improvements. But a lot of times with landlords, we don't see that. So, yeah. And then to comment on the off-street parking, sorry. Starlink owns that, you know, that triangle of three properties, which are rentals. Those people park in the driveway and on the street. 1920, I believe, is a rental. You can see there's a duplex, 1924, 1926, both have cars on the street. 1930 is a rental, has cars on the street. 1934 is me. You can see I have three cars in my driveway, now have a couple on the street. So there's just not room by the amount of people that park on the street. You're seeing a pretty light day today in this aerial view. Probably, everybody's at work. Yeah, thank you.
I have a que, a question.
I'm trying to escape. Yeah.
This is a softball, probably. So the other ones that they own, the 1924 and 1920, the three that you mentioned, are you, other than that parking that you just talked about, are there any issues with those that, you know, are screaming at you? Like, are they not keeping up with your standards, or can you elaborate?
As far as parking is concerned?
No, not parking, anything else.
Oh. It's hard to say at this time. I focus primarily on this because, for this meeting, so I don't, I, you know, I'm at 1934, which is around the corner right here. So I can directly see the backs of these buildings, so I can speak to the exterior, and I know that at one time, a Pampers box was used as a window through the winter. The fire escape is rather rickety, but that'll be part of the site plan that will get addressed, so I'm not worried about that long-term. There have been some, there was a white picket fence around here that was removed, and there has been some curb appeal things done there, but as far as just the exterior of the house, you know, it's another year older. I mean, these homes were built turn of the century, so there's, sometimes there's slapped-on-metal siding, but if any of that fails, sort of is what it is.
Thank you.
Any other questions before I make my third attempt at escape?
Please do sign in if you haven't already.
I have, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mike Hildebrand, 410 Franklin Avenue, just out of the sight of the picture there. I'm just far enough out that I didn't get a card for my property, but I have two properties that are within the 250 that I sent back. So I had a lot prepared to say, but Becky gave me things to talk about, as well as the commission members. I don't know if you guys noticed, but, and I don't want to focus too much on Starlink because, as mentioned earlier, Starlink could leave in six months, and the next person coming along, it doesn't matter what Starlink promised or said they were going to do. But the big thing that I noticed out of the presentation is keeping ops lean. They left Drake because the profit margins weren't there. One of the slides was do the math. It's all math-based. That, that bothers me, that there's no mention of neighbors. It's, it's all math. It's all financial, which, as a bit, as a corporation, that's what you do. But that, that causes me pause. The other slide was revive, revive properties. And I guess I'll speak about myself a little bit. I purchased 410 Franklin Avenue 15 years ago. It's 4,500 square foot. I converted it from eight units to a single-family. Also, reviving properties, I've invested in my neighborhood. In 2013, I bought the five-plex that was designed, built, maintained as a multifamily. It's right on the corner of Franklin and Oakland. I've renovated or partnered with the renovation on seven houses in Riverbend. Two of those are within range. One is a couple back here, and the other one I'm working on right now in Oakland. And just do the math. I've invested $500,000 in those properties, eight of them, and according to the assessor today, they're valued at $2.4 million. So I'm invested in my neighborhood. I've served on the Riverbend Board for 11 years, and I keep looking at you, Carolyn, because all of this is because of you. I've been, I've been the organizer of the Riverbend Home Tour for about the same amount of time. I've volunteered hundreds, if not thousands, of hours in my neighborhood. I'm invested in my neighborhood. And as mentioned earlier, my time on the board, we have been working towards a healthy mix of housing and a healthy mix of businesses and services. I guess righting the wrongs of past decisions to locate a lot of social services and a lot of affordable housing in the neighborhood. So we've been working on that for the 15 years I've been there. And a lot of times, we get accused of not in my backyard. Well, our backyard is full, so we're just requesting that more of that gets spread, spread around. And we've actually had three requests this week for different things on Sixth Avenue that would have, there would be new builds or renovations with multi-units and affordable housing in it. So we're not against affordable housing or density. We're against density where density is too dense. So we are in favor of that, and we're voting on that as a board and as residents. The bottom line, as we said before, we're not rezoning this for Starlink. They are requesting it, but we're rezoning the property. Since 2016, the property's changed hands five times, and I have no reason to believe it won't happen again. I haven't heard a compelling reason besides the applicant's bottom line to convert it. I'm hoping that they, as well as the commission, partner with the neighbors and Neighborhood Association and don't grant the rezoning. I did see where there was talk of five units. Nobody's considered five. We were presented with seven, and we say no to seven. If we want to talk about smaller numbers, I think it's important to wait, get the input from the neighbors that aren't here, and get input from the Riverbend Board to see if there's a number besides seven and one that works for the majority. Thank you. Oh, final thing, parking. Arlington is a snow route, and in the neighborhood, there's no parking on the streets whenever it snows. So I don't know, 300 days out of the year, parking's fine, or, in other people's opinions, it's crowded. But during the snow event, there's no parking on the streets.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question.
Go ahead, Paul.
Could you repeat? You said since 1916.
2016.
2016.
Yes.
The property had changed hands four times?
Five, according to the assessor's site.
Thank you.
Have you or anyone else offered to buy this property off of them to provide a market-rate solution for what you're looking to get at here, which is a single-family home?
I have no idea if anybody else has offered to buy it. My hands, my hands are full right now.
Okay. So we don't know if there is an, if there was a willing buyer, you just don't know if there is anyone or no one?
I don't know if there's one today. I know my property that I purchased was on the market for a year and a half.
Because the Sherman Hill Association did a good job of actually collectively going and buying those houses. You're saying the association hasn't looked to do that as a solution here?
That is not on our agenda, but me, as an individual, I've purchased seven and renovated them. I don't have room for eight right now.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You can go ahead. Oh, okay, sorry. Bring in by 523 Franklin, which is just a block over, at the end of the block over to the west, and I am here tonight in my capacity as a resident and not in any other capacity in which I may serve. I do also serve on the Historic Preservation Commission, and so we do see properties in this area come through with requests. I am a strong supporter of additional density in our neighborhood. I fought really hard to bring in projects that will, that will do that and advocated those, for those projects. When it is well-planned and well-designed, this is neither right now. 1900 Arlington did start as a single-family home. I am no great lover of single-family homes. I think there are other options I would like to find. Those other options, as Mike said, tonight, we were asked to, to support either seven or a single-family. We weren't asked, we weren't presented with any other options. We know from years of research that owners of single-family homes in the neighborhood often rented out rooms or floors, essentially akin to today's accessory dwelling units, and I will advocate for ADUs until I am blue in the face. They are fantastic and important for our neighborhoods. This property, however, took a different path due to lack of regulation and city oversight. Decades before, no, no city staff sitting in this room. There were choices that were made over the years that impacted the historic integrity of this property and how it relates to the properties around it. And that allowed numerous, I'm going to say it, monstrous and ugly additions to the exterior over the decades, and eventually we were left with this seven-unit behemoth that has been a nuisance for years. I live right down the street. It has absolutely been a nuisance. I do commend the current owners for their interest in investing in our neighborhood. We need more of that. I hope we can find a solution in the future, but this current request this evening considers not what is in the best interest of the neighborhood, but what is in the best interest of their bottom line. So far, they have been unwilling to pull this request for seven units and explore any other alternate options for the property. We have been provided no plans or commitments for exterior rehabilitation, which reflects their priority of making significant investments to the interior for marketing purposes. Those interior pictures look amazing. Those, I'm sure they market very well, but we, as neighbors, also have to think about the exterior, how it relates to other properties, how it relates, relates to the historic integrity, and currently only minimal investments have been made to the exterior of properties as required for maintaining rental certificates. I also frankly do not appreciate that we have been told to essentially accept the property as a seven-unit dwelling or suffer the consequences. And presumably, they assume that means vacancy, decline, and demolition. But we have seen homes in much worse conditions successfully rehabilitated back to single-family, and again, I'm no like Arndt, die on a hill for a single-family person, but reduced density as well, properties that have been reduced in density. And I think we have proven, as residents of our neighborhood who have advocated for numerous transformative projects over the years, that we control the trajectory of our neighborhood and collectively shape its future. Our priority and yours is the health of our neighborhood. I urge you to deny this request in its current formulation. Happy to answer any questions.
Are you supportive of the city staff recommendation, Evan, or not? And so I think I would, I would prefer, like Mike, to be allowed to have additional conversations.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
Hello, my name is Angela Thorne. I live at 1339th Street, and I'm also a landlord in Riverbend. I manage a property, 1815 Sixth Avenue, and also 1420 and 228th Street. I have lived in this neighborhood for 24 years. I have lived there most of my life. I've had my grandmother live in that neighborhood. When I came to this neighborhood, our house was five units. We took it down to a single dwelling. It's approximately 3,600 square feet. I'm going to talk as a landlord. I have seen them come and go. Our main issue in this neighborhood is slum lords, absentee landlords. I am a hands-on landlord, and as they have said, they come and go. And just because they're working on this project and investing in it does not mean they're not going to leave. It's their fault that they not researched that there is low intensity for this. Just because they do not do the research, it's not our fault in being forced to make it a high density. There's a reason why we worked very hard to do this, and I feel that you should respect the hard work we put into this for over two decades. We've always been the underdog, and we've actually had to fight extra to get what we have worked hard for. That's about all I have to say. Any questions?
We've, we've heard tonight several times that, that the Neighborhood Association was given two choices, seven units or, or one unit. Unpack your thoughts, would you please, or who else? I should have asked a question earlier on. Was that, how did that work in terms of, you know, giving you these options?
Well, the option was, when a certificate loses it, it's supposed to go to a single dwelling, and that's what we worked hard for, and I am fighting for a single dwelling. It's not our fault, and it should be our problem that they did not do the research and knowing that it was supposed to go to a single dwelling. Yes, it's over 4,000 square feet, and it is, can be made to a single dwelling, of course, Chris. I don't know if you've been in our neighborhood in the last 20 years to see before and after. I don't know if you have seen all the slum lords that have been in the neighborhood and come and go, so.
It is seven, a request for seven dwelling units, so that's really the only thing that the neighborhood has been presented with until our staff recommendation came out last Friday, where we were kind of meat in the middle, a little over-middle, but.
That answers my question. So what I'm understanding is, the Neighborhood Association was given a sort of a range, but this was after the Neighborhood Association, is, Neighborhood Association had met and had a chance to digest what the situation was. Is that correct?
I'm not sure when the neighborhood met, but, yeah, our recommendation is just a recommendation.
Please.
Thank you.
Mike Hildebrand, 410 Franklin Avenue. The way it was presented to us, as Bert said, is the letter came and it said, op. 27, rezoning for op. 27. When meeting with Becky and her group, they said, we're going to go for seven. And so as a resident that got the letter and as a board member with the Riverbend Neighbor Association, we were under the impression that that was what was being decided, op. to seven or one.
So when you had your Neighborhood Association to discuss this, and I, I don't.
The board.
The board, thank you.
The board did.
But I understood the board had been considering the, this, this question for some time now, but the board did not have the opportunity to respond to this letter as a board. Is that correct?
The letter came from the city for the notice of this meeting and the rezoning. And so we were presented that the owners of the property want to rezone it to NX, whatever it is, for op. 27, and the owners were saying, we're.
but the board did not have the opportunity to respond to this letter as a board. Is that correct?
The letter came from the city for the notice of this meeting and the rezoning. And so we were presented that the owners of the property want to rezone it to NX, whatever it is, for op two-seven, and the owners were saying, we're going for seven. And if we get denied from seven, we're going to go for six. And if we get denied for six, we're going to go for five. So they were going at seven, and that's their job. That's our business. So we are under the impression, as me as a resident and me as a board member, with the letters that I was getting from the city, that they were going, everybody was going for seven.
Just, I might be slow, but I'll ask the same question again. So the board hasn't had a chance to discuss this as a board?
No, nothing less than seven.
Thank you.
I'd also like to say, we did work hard to get to low density, and there's a reason why there's rules to follow and put in place. So I would appreciate if we would follow the guidelines that we worked very hard for. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak against this item? Please state your name, address, sign in when you're done.
Hi. My name is Amber Adams. I'm Ben's partner. We're at nineteen thirty-four Arlington. I was probably one of the more passionate neighbors that the applicant spoke about earlier, got pretty fired up at that meeting. Given that other multi-unit properties directly back up to the window that I look out of every day, I see these properties all the time. They're ugly. There's police, you know, around all times of the day and night. I've had to install security cameras that point at those properties because it's just a continuous problem of trespassing. I have multiple vehicles. I don't care about parking, so I know that the parking was a concern. If you can't park on the street when there's snow, then it'll sort itself out. You either get towed or you find somewhere to park. I am a staunch preservationist as well. You've heard from somebody, this system was designed to work this way. I think it should be allowed to work as it is. I don't think it should be six. I don't think it should be five. It should be four. And if I have to do that until we get back down to one and come to these meetings and speak my piece every single time, I will do it every single time. What is the point of even having the historical district if all of the things within it don't have to comply to the same rules? What is the point of doing any of this if we're not going to follow the rules that are already in place? There's an exception for everything, then what is the point of doing the whole thing at all? I have to hold my house to a different set of exterior standards than a landlord does. Meanwhile, I have to live there, and they're just trying to make money. I don't care about their beautiful before and afters. I don't care about their bad decisions. I do not care about their profit margins. I care about my neighborhood, and I care about my home, what I have to look at, deal with, and live with every day. So I do not support this at all. I think it should revert to a single-family home, and if the city needs to put some money behind that through an invest DSM program, then I think that they need to do it. I do not like being held hostage by, well, if nobody wants to buy it, nobody got the chance because it was part of a huge portfolio of a different slumlord selling off to other slumlords. And I don't care. I have absolutely no sympathy. I mean, if you already own ninety-nine other properties, make your money off your ninety-nine other properties. You don't need to do it off my neighborhood. Thank you.
When you're talking about, sorry, when you're talking about the, you're looking out your window at bad properties, are you talking about their properties?
Yes. So three nineteen, I have an office that points directly at the back of all of these. There's cars parked behind nineteen thirty-four there. That's my, you know, my driveway comes all the way back. I have a garage back there. I'm back there. There's a very clear line of sight to the rear of all those properties. We've had problems with trash, had to call the city multiple times, rats, roaches, things that are outside. You know, every time a building gets sprayed around there, there's a few multi-units. Every time a building gets sprays, I'm going to get bugs coming into my house from the surrounding properties. It's a huge issue. Some of these buildings are absolutely disgusting. Nineteen thirty, which is directly next to me, actually recently had a fire the early part of the year, and so that is currently sitting vacant. I have no idea what's going to happen to that property. It's one of the oldest properties on the street. We're not sure if that's going to be a tear-down situation or what. And that's, obviously, that house is like ten feet away from mine. It's less than the width of my driveway, almost sharing windows with that house. So there's already a lot that's, you know, going on in the neighborhood, and I just do not think that this is the right direction, especially with the other multi-units that are in that vicinity. I'm not against affordable housing. I'm not against people trying to, you know, invest in real estate, but as long as it's with the right intentions, and I just, I don't think that this is the solution.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yeah? Moving to neutrals. Thank you. Please state your name, address, sign in when you're done.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lulu Dickey, and I live at eighteen fourteen Oakland, which is just about three hundred feet from the property in question. And the reason why I wanted to come up here as a neutral speaker is because I wanted to address some of Mr. Draper's comments. You made the comment that you thought that redlining might be a facetious argument. I want to assure you that it's not. We are still facing the repercussions in our neighborhood of historic redlining. This shows up in everything from residents' health to our access to grocery stores, our schools, the way that our children are given opportunities or not given opportunities. So those effects are still very real for us. And redlining was a form of systemic institutional discrimination. And by forcing this change to the agreed-upon land use plan, I feel that could also be seen as another form of systemic and institutional maltreatment of our area. I also want to counter the insinuation that our neighborhood won't support a single-family rehabilitation for this property. I do take some offense to that. I think it shows a bias against our neighborhood. I just went last night to an open house in Sherman Hill, looking at a house that had undergone a complete rehabilitation, and that house was valued at about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So obviously, we may not get those prices in our neighborhood, but I do think that there is an opportunity for this house to be rehabilitated to a single-family if it was sold as such. We do have a lot of pride in our neighborhood. I moved into the area in 2020, and I have met some of the most passionate people. Everyone that's here tonight has donated their time, their energy, their emotion to our neighborhood to make it a better place. Overall, the reason why I spoke as a neutral speaker is because I do support more than one unit at this property. I don't support seven. I think it could be an asset to our neighborhood as a five-plex. But I think as a part of having a just and equitable approach, we deserve more time as a neighborhood to go through that process with the five-plex. I do like Starlink. I've had multiple conversations with Becky, and I think that we can come to a compromise. But again, I would urge you to give us more time to go through the process to consider the five-plex option. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I provide a quick clarification? I have zero misconception that there is not both systemic and pervasive issues associated with redlining. I think those are, you know, I think if anyone has watched any more than two of these meetings, I am not at a loss of an understanding that our, you know, lip service we give to equity, I think, is completely unrealistic, especially when we don't even use the materials we've done and the efforts we've done, especially with directors, council, and all those other groups have actually highlighted those issues. My concern is one, which is the reason I left Sherman Hill, is because when do we actually go from actually intentionally correcting a wrong to then putting in too many barriers that ironically get us in the same place or become exclusionary again? That's my concern, and that's my question with these, is when do we actually start to use a government to again actually exclude when we've actually gotten it out of that issue and now end up with, as referenced before, issues of potential NIMBY issues? And if we're using, saying, oh, we've had this really, really wrong in the past, which we have and is pervasive and is constantly here, we're not willing to face up the fact that we need to fix it, and now we're saying, in order to fix it, we need to be exclusionary again, that to me doesn't seem to hold water, and that's my challenge with Sherman Hill, with some of the other impediments we're putting there. We saw with Sherman Hill, the brewery issue, we're actually putting on restrictions to a business that's going to prevent its operation as a good community business, and now we're saying again, we're going to remove access to improvement because we aren't getting perfection. I find that problematic.
Yeah, and that's not my opinion that we need to be exclusionary and only have one single-family unit or single-family home at this property. We were not presented with the option of anything less than seven or more than one, and so I think that we deserve more time to go through that process to consider the five units.
Thank you. I think there was someone else who wanted to speak neutrally about this one?
Yeah, I'll just be neutral because I'm not going to speak to necessarily seven or one, but my name's Trey Hall. I live at twenty-five thirty University Avenue, two oh five, and I'm just a guy that would like to help solve our housing crisis. The number-one thing I want to get out here is that I don't want to see this return to a single-family unit. We've heard multiple times from a lot of the folks here that do great work. I love Riverbend. I've canvassed there extensively. There's some really, really cool houses that you see there that people are doing really good work. But I just, I think that we're allowing the perfect to be the enemy of the good here, and it's from my understanding, it sounds like the developer has really not gotten the chance to get in and do what they're looking to do here. It sounds like they got this property, they didn't really understand fully, and I'm not going to get into all of that, but I don't think that letting this return to a single-family unit solves any problem. This is a great location. It's close to transit. It's walkable. These are the exact types of neighborhoods that we need to put more housing into. So that's essentially what I'll leave it at. It goes back to, it goes back to so many different things. Income diversification of a neighborhood, that's what preserves its sustainability in the long run, right? If we just have single-family units that are hundreds of thousands of dollars, that shuts out so many great folks. I have friends that live in Riverbend. One of my, one of my colleagues from DMAC is from El Salvador, and he chose Riverbend because it provided all of these opportunities for folks. And I'm worried that if we just have the goal of getting back to single-family units, as we've heard so many times tonight, we're going to end up with a neighborhood that doesn't give those opportunities out as much. So that's what I'm going to leave it at today. Thank you very much. That's what I'm going to leave it at today. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Okay. The applicant, you do have five minutes for a rebuttal if you'd like it.
So I just want to speak on this, so this portfolio has been very challenging. So we bought it, and last year was a very challenging year to get contractors, different things, and the full-time hires were this year. So we now have the capacity to do what we want to do, and this property here, nineteen hundred, I mean, the top parts remodeled, and they keep talking about the curb appeal, and there will be curb appeal with the site plan approval process for sure. Bike racks, landscaping, parking ratios, we know that. I actually have been through a site plan on a Drake property that is now taking almost two years still vacant because we had to go through the site plan with the city. It took seven months later, and we have all these things to figure out, but we're going to finish the project. We always try to finish what we started. That's kind of our motto as well. And we just want to finish this project. We are already halfway there. We just got to, and this, I would say, has been vacant since we picked that last person in April, and we collected no rent or revenue since the start. But it is still better off for us and this neighborhood, in my opinion, this corner, to finish the job. And this is, this process has been quite painful, and we understand. You know, I'm in rural city development for a large company based here, and it takes years to get entitlements done and things figured out with planning and zoning, but, and that's why people don't take entitlement risk. But we just happen to be here, and this is something, it's a lesson learned. I admit mistake with that, but we want to get this job done. And we will have the funds to get it done as a seven unit, and we've already rented out nineteen oh eight, three one nine Franklin. We have it half-occupied, and we are replacing that egress that's going to be there. There'll be an egress here that we will need to replace as well, and we are held to the same standards that the HPC, the Historical Preservation Board, has. But obviously, we are not living there as a single-family occupant, so there is lesser incentive to beautify the outside to a point where, what a single-family owner would be doing. We do what's manageable because there are margins to be made, but we have a capital plan to redo things on the outside over time, but it takes time to get there, and without cash flow, it's going to be hard to get there. Just a few points. Thank you.
So I had a quick question. So you've sat and listened to the neighbors?
Yes.
And did you hear them? So now, are you interested in having further conversation, or are you going to stick at seven?
I mean, as a businessperson, that everyone understands that I am also, because that's why we're doing what we're doing. And, but we are in the long-term hold, and they mentioned many times, they don't know what's going to happen next. We have a good track record of owning and holding our properties. Warren Buffett style is kind of what we, I live here, by the way. I live downtown Des Moines, and we've owned majority of our properties for the last ten years. If there's, it's no different than anyone in the audience wanting to sell their single-family home tomorrow. They have the same opportunity to sell it tomorrow as I do sell it tomorrow.
But they're not asking to rezone it?
Correct, correct. So to that point, it's like, we just want to finish the job, and we're going to aim high for seven. We bought it as a seven unit, so we're going to try to seek seven units here, and we have to already spend so much more money getting to the finish line. And a five unit just destroys value for reasons that seem like a piece of paper or administration-wise. There was a fine line between having a rental certificate and not having one that triggered this, yeah. So...
Do you have a break-even? I mean, your presentation indicated you're losing money on this at seven, you're losing even more money at five. I mean, do you have a break-even number in your head, and would you be willing to accept it if the neighborhood said they'll buy it?
Yes, of course.
Have you offered that to them?
I could definitely do the math and offer it to them, but I don't know who is willing to do that work. Doesn't sound, but I'd be willing to make an offer, of course.
I mean, big argument by the neighborhood here says that they'd be willing, you know, there's people that are going to step up and do it. I mean, if you offer the number and it doesn't go through, I mean, that answers the mail. But if we, I mean, well, if we basically put this in continuance, you put the offer out there, and we come and say, okay, in a few weeks, whether or not we consider it later, as opposed to now. I mean, it sounds like they haven't, they haven't considered less than seven. They haven't been offered the opportunity to buy you out. No, no, no. No, I'm just saying, it seems like a middle ground, and everyone's saying we either rezon it or not now. We would push it out to the future.
Okay. The public hearing is...
It's not the neighborhood's financial responsibility to make up for somebody else's poor financial decisions.
I understand, but we're going to have order in the meeting and just have someone speaking from the microphone. Are there any other questions for the applicant?
We have to. We have to be compliant. We have to. So the egress view and seat here, it is part of the budget right now to replace that. It is not in good use. It will not pass rental certificate inspection. And we wanted to get there with the city, but in that process, we found out that it was lapsed to a single-family. So why should we spend any more money until we know what the density is going to look like?
Does the rental certificate process require you to repair, like, the holes in the siding?
Absolutely, yes. Everything, I mean, we're going to follow code with the city's rental inspection division. It's fire and life safety. Like, maybe the flashing is peeling. We have to repaint everything, replacing, I mean, the gutters that are not there, the window work, obviously, we need HPC approval to do anything there to replace it in kind, which, by the way, is a lot, lot more expensive and inefficient, but it's for historic preservation purposes. Like, there are two porches on the first floor that need to be redone and replaced as well. So these are things that need to be done. We know that.
Can I ask you, sorry, please forgive me for interrupting you. What's the historic preservation process when it comes to, like, siding and windows? Can you explain that?
Yes, we have to put a submission in to provide kind of suggestions of what it would kind of suggestions of what it would be to be compliant, whether it's redoing the egress. And then we have to present no different than this kind of format to the HPC. And I have to explain if it's going to be different than what, you know, they want it to be. And we've gone through the process a few times. Mike Hildembrand can speak a lot more on that. He's here today from the board, two people here from the board. There are certain things about maintaining the look of it historically, which everyone can agree or not agree is the most economical way of doing things, or the most energy-efficient way of doing things. But there are things that, we are held to that standard and process as well, no different than anyone here that lives in the Riverbend district.
I'm afraid that that part of the meeting is over, so we don't have another mechanism for you to speak again.
Okay. It was just about the exterior purposes of the HPC.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? What do we think?
I'll talk.
Go ahead, Justin.
Sure. First of all, I want to apologize, guys, for stepping away. This is, right, one of the most frustrating ones I've sat through for a multitude of So I'm in the process of getting a divorce, and I've escaped an emotionally abusive relationship. And housing like this is what saved my life. It saved my life. We need houses like this, even if it's women. We need in-the-middle housing. I understand you guys are concerned about slum lords, but these are upstanding people. Look at their body of work. And it pisses me off to no avail that we have people of color following the rules and doing it by the book. By the book. And we want to tax them. We need housing like this in Iowa. We need it in Des Moines. I hear your concerns about bad tenants, but I'm willing to give these people a try. I live in a house, an apartment, that's $800 in Lower Beaver, and it could be considered slums. It could. But I'm willing to give these people a chance, not just for me, but women who are in domestic violence situations and don't have the money to get in there. $796 is enough money for a woman to escape a relationship that she needs relief from. We need housing like this. I'm tired of the dog whistles. I'm tired about slum lords. These people gave a brave presentation. They know what they're doing. They need an opportunity to put their plan in fruition. Now, I will ask that the owners will work with Riverbend to make sure this place is clean, tidied up. You guys will do background checks, but we need housing like this. I went back over there and bawled. We need this. I hope you guys can realize my true concern, because it saved me. I wouldn't be here today if I did not have the $800 rent that I have now. Divorce is already hard enough. Can you figure out the financial side of it? So please, we have to increase empathy, and we have to give them an opportunity. And I ask that the owner will please work with Riverbend. Please do background checks. But that place is filled with people of color, 30% white, 27% black. North High School is right down the street, the lowest incoming high school in the city of Des Moines. Can you imagine a single mother living there who gets pregnant and kicks out of her home, and she can afford $700? We have to look at the big picture. You guys are all upstanding citizens. You've all got careers. You all have opportunity. This is an opportunity for us to mentor people coming into those spaces. Please. Des Moines is too small. Please.
Period. But politely, I live in that neighborhood, and politely, there are people of color, they didn't follow the rules. They are not great businesspeople, because if they did, they would have, they took too much time on their presentation, they should have taken a little bit more time doing background on purchasing the product. There are houses, and there are housing opportunities on Sixth Avenue in a 36-unit that is absolutely gorgeous at less than $600. One-bedroom and studio. So, and it was built specifically for that. My frustration, our house, again, was multi-unit. We talked a friend into buying an eight-unit, 4,500-square-foot house that is a beautiful single-family home. People do that. We build housing structures to support many different kinds of needs. What I'm asking, what frustrated me, and I was working, I was trying to find a workaround, was to say, can we step it down a little bit? Maybe not single-family. But I am not going to commit to rezoning that space. And the owner won't even commit to working with the neighborhood to drop it down to four or five. So I don't know what kind of, I don't know if that's a really good businessperson.
You know, let me follow up on, basically, on what both of you have said. What we've heard tonight are a lot of questions on both sides of the issue. There's a lot that's unknown. There's a lot that needs to be known. And I think the least that we can do as a commission tonight, frankly, is to continue this issue. I think the board needs to have a chance to, you know, review what we've talked about tonight, and I regret that the board didn't have a chance to do that earlier. If they want to call a meeting, a general meeting of the association, I mean, that's their prerogative. If they want to invite the developer, that's their prerogative, too. If the developer wants to talk with them, I think that would be a very good idea. I see, I read on the agenda tonight that the applicant will provide a summary of the neighborhood meeting at the public hearing, which I didn't hear. So I think that there are a lot of issues involved, and I would move that we continue this meeting until a time we can discuss whatever would work out.
Sure. We would need the applicant's, I guess, blessing in order to do the continuance, since it is their application. We would need that to, so to ask the applicant if they're willing to continue to September 21, or October 5, or October 19, is the next three?
I would support that motion. Specifically, in my final ask, that the owner would work with Riverbend to give them assurances. If you can guarantee that the seven units will be housed, and you will maintain the property, that I would like to see partnership.
Justin, you know, we can deny the rezoning to protect that piece of land. They can go to another commission and see if they can get a variance. And then we're, it gives us, it's a good compromise.
I would aggressively support wills of offering, seeing if a continuance is possible, and if we say, hey, there wasn't a chance to buy it out, can't buy it out, and everyone wins, as opposed to having, either we rezone or we don't, and we end up with, you know, a split baby.
Is the applicant open to a continuance?
I think we want to get to some kind of solution that makes sense for everyone, yes. But it's been a very tiring and drawn-out process, and maybe we need more time, but I don't know. I need to have a definitive idea of what that looks like myself before I can even say that would be. Because right now, it's, like, open, like, do we wait two weeks? Do we wait three weeks? Do we talk to the audience, Riverbend, you know, community again? Like, what does that, I mean, mean? It means a lot of them are for single-family. You heard it tonight. They are not going to budge on that. It seems that way. It was that way during neighborhood meeting. I've already spoken to them for two and a half hours, similar presentation style. I don't know what else can move their hearts to something other than one unit. I'd say 95% of them here tonight. I need more definitive timeline and what that means, because right now, it's open-ended.
And if we provide a two-week target, because, I mean, it sounds like the votes are basically saying that we're not, it's not going to switch the zoning here tonight. So it's either you're getting, you know, a single-family is what it sounds like the majority feels, or it's two weeks
We haven't voted on that. I'm not sure. You should speak for everyone on the commission in that regard.
Fair enough. But our options, if we're being clear, are either tonight, we get a definitive, it's either one, you know, one or approval of this, or it's two weeks to figure out if there's another way to, you know, find a different resolution.
So we can deny, and they can find another solution, is one option. Or we can support the rezoning. Or we can ask that she accept a continuance. Is that correct?
Yeah.
What's the path with denial?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
What's the path with the denial?
Well, if the commission recommends denial tonight, then it would take a supermajority vote at city council for it to pass. That said, there's already more than 20% opposition, so it's already going to need a supermajority vote at city council to pass. But if the city council denies it, then they could apply for a use variance from the zoning board of adjustment.
Bert, could you just clarify, over here? Could you clarify, we've had a lot of talk about the work that the neighborhood has done to make sure that these homes revert to single-family homes. Could you clarify for me, like, is that in the plan for the district? Is that, where does that come from? And where does that?
About 10, 15 years ago, the neighborhood did a neighborhood-wide downzoning, where under the old zoning code, it was zoned R3, which was, R3 was multifamily. They downzoned everything that wasn't built as multifamily. They downzoned it to a R160, which is a one-family residential district. And so when the city adopted a new code, what was zoned R160 then became N5, and then what was zoned, what remained zoned, R3, went to either NX1, or there's some N5-4, if there's less than four units in it. But that really is the
Fifty years ago, I walked the neighborhood.
I'm sorry, what?
I was one of the two people that walked the neighborhood to do this rezoning.
So it was with, but it's a city code now?
Yep, it is.
That if the lease agreement
Yeah. Yeah, so the zoning
That is the city code that we are being asked to change, basically, at this point.
Right. So it's owned a single-family. The city code also has provisions in it that says if the use, if it, so if there's a use that has legal nonconforming rights to continue, if that use ceases for six months or longer, then they lose those rights. So those rules are in place for situations like this. The only way that these homes would ever get converted back to single-family is if they lose those legal nonconforming rights.
I just wanted to clarify that that's what we're
When's the last time that we've allowed that certificate to be renewed when it lapsed?
Well, once it lapses for more than six months, they would have to get the zoning approvals needed for that.
When's the last time we've had a zoning approval like this?
We've had some in the Drake neighborhood in the last year. I don't know specifically. But I think those were for, like, a duplex, or maybe a three or four unit. I don't know that we've had any.
Did we have this much pushback on it?
If you remember that one on Kingman Boulevard that wanted eight units, staff was recommending four, that had a lot of pushback on that, and it got denied.
Okay. So right now, we have a possible motion to see this again in two weeks, but it needs your approval. It sounds to me like you're not open to that, but I don't want to speak for you, obviously.
I mean, I'm willing to wait two weeks, but the issue at hand is that I really don't think that the audience today, who are majority dissenting, will change their hearts, because as you all have heard tonight, they all want a single-family for the same reason, that it's one neutral party.
But you say, but you say, but you say that you're interested in working with the Neighborhood Association. You say that there is a site plan that you have to develop, and it would seem to me that that would be an absolute wonderful entree to work with these people. And on the other side of the coin, that would give them an opportunity to work with you as well.
Yeah, I'd be willing to wait two weeks, and we can, I would set up a time to meet with them again. But honestly, the site plan is going to be tricky to get to unless I know my density, because without the site, without density, I can't tell what my site plan's going to look like at this point.
So then, are we postponing, or are we looking for somebody to make another motion?
Another motion.
Okay.
One sec.
Before we, to, okay, cool.
All right.
We're about to close comments, right?
Say again.
Are we about to close comments? We are. Okay, sweet. I'm going to just say one more thing. Yeah, I would, I'd like to see you work with them. If you can give models, give reassurance. If you guys have taken notes down from what the community has said, I would try to answer to those to get this pushed through. There are apartments around that same area. I liked your presentation. I like what you're trying to do. I think that we need this in the middle. I would really push for you to work with them and get it done. Last thing, guys, please don't come to this board ever again with dog whistles about slum lords. Extremely offensive. Don't come here with redlining. Extremely offensive. I haven't seen one black person in this room to discuss what's going here. And on an equity piece, I just don't want to hear it. I'm frustrated. I'm mad. So if there's other concerns, raise them. But don't, not, I don't want to hear slum lords. Not again.
I have one thought that came up when we were talking. It seems like we're trying to, like, the way we're talking about the process of going to zoning board of adjustment, or going to council, are the reversion of the zoning after the lapsing of the rental certificate, as if we're sort of upsetting, like, a process or stepping in where we don't belong? But that's not true. That's the purpose of this body, is to consider rezoning for reasons like this. So don't say, well, we can't decide this. This isn't our responsibility. This is exactly our responsibility. So if we don't, if we think that it should be rezoned, then that's what we're here for.
I think everyone on this board knows that I'm a big density hawk. So I, as much as this, everybody wants it to be a single, many people want it to be a single-family. I recognize the shortage of housing, especially affordable housing, which this applicant has provided in a couple of the neighborhoods. So I personally would have a hard time taking that away. And I think that encouraging biking, which people, obviously, in the neighborhood already do, and Sixth Avenue has really great wide off-street bike lanes. I rode on them this week when I rode by this property. I think those are good solutions. And I could not find, some, a couple people mentioned the Riverbend plan, as well as the historic preservation plan. I could not find, again, just doing a word search, where it said one of the goals was to de-convert multifamily units back to single-family homes. I couldn't find that. I'm certainly willing to have that pointed out to me. I could not find that as a goal of our, the new historic preservation plan that we recently passed, or the Riverbend plan. That doesn't mean it's not there. And parking on the street slows down traffic, and I think, I don't think we should be afraid of that. That's something you want. You want people to park on the street because it slows them down. And if you continue to have problems with people speeding on Arlington, there is a process process to reach out to traffic and transportation for a traffic, traffic calming study to get speed humps and other measures put in the street to slow the traffic down. I, I don't think all of that should be lumped on this one owner of this property to solve that. And my one final comment is the certificate of appropriateness, we heard a lot about when we reviewed the historical preservation plan, which I am not familiar with. I don't know what comes first. If, obviously, it comes after getting a zoning change, but is that the next step before a site plan? If someone could answer that, that would be helpful for me.
The first step would be getting the use set. So the zoning would set the use, whether it be the rezoning or the use variance. The next step would be the site plan. And then if they get the site plan approved, then they would have to make improvements to bring the site into conformance with that site plan, which those external improvements, whether that be building materials or even paving or sidewalks or dumpster enclosures, those would all require certificate of historical appropriatenesses from the Historic Preservation Commission. So before any construction can happen, they need the certificate.
What was your first?
Yeah.
No, the use variance would also go with the land. So if it lapsed for six months or more in the future, then, then it would go away, but it could transfer to different owners.
Because by the time, I guess, say, the commission took action tonight, then it would be received by city council on October 2. October 2, they probably set their hearing for October 23, and that's when it would be denied. So the soonest they could go to the board of adjustment would be November. So that gives plenty of time to work with the neighborhood.
We do have a motion still to push this item out two weeks. What's the date of that? To the 21st of this month.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay, we're open for additional motions.
Well, this is a, this has been a lot of really, really thoughtful comments, and it's easy to kind of move back and forth when you're hearing it, which makes me think that the staff motion was, was probably pretty wise. It, it found some number to latch onto, and it happened to be parking. At first, I was questioning that and said, well, it feels sort of arbitrary because you could add two more parking stalls and then you have seven apartments, and so then is seven okay? But I think what probably happened is that they were trying to find a, a middle ground that made some sort of sense. So I guess what I'm saying is that I would move staff.
Thank you. Any discussion on Andy's motion to move staff?
What's the staff's motion again?
To allow rezoning with the condition of five units. Okay, let's, Emily, did you have something?
Oh, I'm just struggling because, like Chris mentioned earlier, we're kind of, I don't know if we're splitting a baby here. I just had a baby, so I don't like, love saying that. We're not going to split her in half. But the, the hard, the thing I'm struggling with is five, is that I only heard one person, and she was neutral, say that five would be okay with her. The, the rest said one only. So to me, it's almost like, what's the difference at that point between five and seven? If they don't like five, they don't like seven. I'd like to, I'd like to rezone. I just don't know if five is right or seven. I'd be interested in other thoughts on that.
I like your concern.
If we can only get to five, I'll vote for five. So trying to get to a vote here that we can support.
I think that would raise, sorry. I think only hearing one saying yes to five and multiple saying yes to one, I still think goes along with his motion for the need for more time in conversation. Because if that's something that they can consider to meet in the middle, then I think possibly could be a win-win for both parties.
That's why I voted for continuation as well. Some of these people talked about it.
Would, would anybody entertain another motion after her argument being raised to another continuation? To allow them to have that conversation?
I think we should just vote on the motion, and then if it doesn't work, then we go to the next thing.
Okay. Let's vote on Andy's motion, which is the staff recommendation. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Okay, motion fails.
I'm going to make a motion to continue conversation for two more weeks.
Can I do one quick thing? Can I just like, close the loop here and make a motion for seven and see where we are? And then we can do yours?
Yep, I like that.
If, I'm assuming mine will fail. But I am making a motion to do seven units as requested by the applicant.
Okay. All in favor of Emily's motion for seven? Please raise your right hand. All opposed? That motion fails.
All right, I'm going to present the two-week motion to allow for continuation to find a middle ground.
It did fail. But do we redo a motion?
We can do it again.
Yes, it can be re-proposed, yes.
Have we done the, we can? I'm willing to do a single-unit vote to see where that's at, and then go back.
I don't think that's...
That's not enough.
Single unit is the default, so if we don't approve something else, that's what we're at, right?
True. Then I'll make a motion and go back to the two-week then, if that's allowed.
Okay. There is a motion on the table to postpone this item for two weeks. All in favor, please raise your hand, right hand.
The clarification from the attorney, I thought we've had a vote on that already, and the applicant said they were opposed to coming back.
I was just about to ask a question. Has the applicant, I mean, we can give the, applicant needs to accept this, you know, continuance. I'm just saying.
Going to make a comment. As you can see, we're kind of stonewalled here.
To, to me, it just, no, I mean, to me, it just seems like it's kind of half and half right now, based on what you guys just did. Because part of me just says I want to be done with this tonight because we want to move on. So, or we wait two weeks and that is the middle ground, if you will. I can't be that gracious. And to Justin's point, I, I would like to have them walk through our units that we have right now. That's one, one way to convince some of them that we are not slum lords. I think that was a big concern. And we're willing to wait a few more weeks, and, you know, time is money. It is, and it is also a stressor for some people here. But I think to give closure to everyone here in the room that majority were dissenting, I invite them to come to our places, talk to our tenants, meet them, and we come back again to the table and decide. Because I think that's the most gracious way of seeing it.
Is two weeks enough, or would you rather have four?
No, two weeks is enough. We want to go faster with this one also because time is not on our hands. It's getting to holidays, we know it gets busy. I work when I need to work, but some people don't, just given this people that we deal with. So we want to be cognizant of that. We're fiduciary back to our investors. We have other partners on this as well. So I am fiduciary to the investment group, and I'm fiduciary to, you know, yeah, that is, that is what we do. So I'm willing to be gracious to extend that middle ground by having them tour our units and to, to continue discussion as to how we can help bridge that gap.
I was going to say, just to make sure we're clear, it's not waiting two weeks. This is actively engaging. It's not waiting for people to come to us. It's actively working to close the gap in two weeks, right? That's the opportunity being provided.
Right. So if I'm, I want to clarify that. So between now and two weeks, when we meet again, I'll show up again with probably the same group of people, and they would, I would extend the invitation from tonight onwards to figure out a touring group, if anything. I think that's a good step. For them to go tour our properties, do that, and then we come back in two weeks and they can elaborate and experience as good or bad, and we vote again. Maybe some have changed their hearts, maybe not, but that's at least something I'm willing to try. I, I don't know what else I can do to change their hearts at this point, besides having them see what we do, or talk to us more in person.
With your approval done for that two-week continuance, let's take a vote. All in favor of two-week continuance for this item? Please raise your hand. Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
We are not, we are not done. We still have one more item on our agenda, so I'm just waiting for those people who are not here for item number 12. You're welcome to leave.
Just letting it breathe.
Yeah, everybody else, take a breath, stretch, do some stretches.
Abby, you ready?
Yeah. So item number 12 is a request from Merchants White Line Warehouse, Inc. for review and approval of a public hearing site plan, site improvements for Merchants Distribution for property located at 1850 East Euclid Avenue, for a type-two design alternative to allow loose materials to be stacked outdoors in heights up to 25 feet tall when loose material are not allowed to be stacked higher than six feet tall. And Nick from staff is here to present. Thank you.
Thanks. Madam Chair, members of the commission, Nick Tarpe, planning staff. So really switching gears here, we're not talking about the zoning issue. We're not talking about a zoning issue at all. It's strictly a site plan issue. So just to try to keep the commission, I guess, on target here, really, just like it says in the requested action, we're only talking about the heights of the storage, of the loose materials that are being stored outside. Not talking about any sort of screening, where it's going, anything like that. It's strictly about the height. And then just, it's in your staff report, but just again, kind of reiterating some of the background here, the applicant submitted a site plan back in early July to legalize and authorize the outdoor storage areas. So that was the installation of the, like, the three-sided bunkers. We'll take a look at those. And then to allow the piles of salt and other materials, materials to be stored outside, as well as install some new paving and a truck scale. So they submitted a site plan in early July for that. That's been administratively approved. So it was approved with the six-foot-high storage limit for the loose materials. So by the book, it went through, got administrative approval, they met the requirements for the outdoor storage, for the screening, how it was contained, and the heights. They've since returned to the commission, or they resubmitted a site plan to allow up to 25 feet of loose materials to be stored outside. Does that make sense? Do you want me to go over that at all? Okay, cool. So digging into the context here, this is Merchants Warehouse. It's a pretty big warehouse up in the East Euclid industrial corridor. If you can follow my cursor here towards the southeast, this is ADM and a lot of their affiliated facilities. So we've, this commission has seen a lot of the stuff that they've been doing recently with some of their expansions and zoning things. Really pretty industrial area. We've got a metal recycler to the south. Liberty, Liberty has a batch plant over here to the southwest, some outdoor storage uses that are adjacent to the site, rail yards, things like that. So generally, a pretty industrial corridor. So like I said, we're not talking about zoning. It's strictly a site design thing that we're discussing here tonight. So digging into the site plan, existing conditions here, this shows, this is really how the site had operated historically or has operated historically. We've got a pretty large warehouse here, got a large kind of open yard in the back with a couple of rail spurs. And then as part of their site improvements, really, they were adding some paving. So this is where that truck scale would go, adding some paving here in the back. And then also, this is the area that's specifically highlighted or called out for the outdoor storage. So the loose materials would be stored back here in these bunkers that are covered with tarps. And I'll show some imagery that shows what that looks like. So here's a sample image provided by the applicant. I'll let them add a little bit more context to this, but this is the kind of setup or situation that they were thinking of how the site would operate. Here's just some equipment that they use and kind of typically how their operations look. So digging into the staff report here, really as staff, I think we want to acknowledge that we understand that the applicant has proposed a pretty robust tarping system. I think you saw that in the image, that the applicant can vouch for that. Really, when we're thinking about the outdoor storage regulations, the key reason for having the height limitation on these loose materials is that a lot of times, when it gets windy, these things can blow around. So when you have these really high piles, even if they are tarped, there's a lot of concern that dust and materials and things can leak on to other properties and be a nuisance. Again, as staff, we understand that the applicant has proposed pretty robust tarping. I don't know if, if the dust leakage or the material leakage is really our biggest concern at this point. I think generally, when we were evaluating the request, the big, the couple, the two real big things that we noticed, one, this is a pretty big outdoor storage area. It's not just like a couple of bunkers, accessory use. It's over 18,000 square feet. So that's, it's a pretty big use, takes up a lot of the site. The idea and the intent for the applicant is to use this kind of long-term. It's a new development at the site. It's a, a new, I'll let the applicant speak more to it, but for lack of better term, maybe a new stream of income for them at a distribution facility. So there's kind of an air of permanence to it as well. And so as staff, we thought a 25-foot, potentially up to 25-foot pile being tarped kind of continually in a condition of permanence was not appropriate, and that a more permanent structure would be the more appropriate solution to store these outdoor materials. So in the staff report, I did mention maybe like a sister project or a cop project over at the airport. Obviously, different context, different scale, but they proposed a solution with the hoop style building that's a little bit more permanent that we think accomplishes a lot of the same goals. So we would really encourage the applicant to explore something like that. So that's the basis of our request. We're recommending denial of it. We didn't receive any comments or anything on it. I'll take any questions.
Can you lend some specificity to loose materials?
Yeah, generally, so like, anything that's like, like an aggregate, so like road salt, other types of aggregates. I know the applicant's not proposing to do this here, but like, maybe fill or sand or things like that. That is all, fits under the category of what a loose material would be.
What is, what is the material here?
I'm sorry?
What is the material?
Oh, here at this site specifically? Yeah, good question. It's specifically for salt. So road salt. So that was really, I think, going, and the applicant can speak to this in a little bit more detail. The reason that there's been like multiple site plans submitted and they wanted to get going right away with a lot of the paving and things like that and get that initial approval is because they're trying to get salt and other materials here in October for the winter. So they've come, they got their initial approval to do some of the paving, some of the site work to kind of get it prepped, and now, you know, they, they know they're up, kind of up against deadline here. They want to try to basically go back to the commission to try to get that increased storage height. go back to the Commission to try to get that increased storage height. Does that make sense?
I think so. So is the issue that if they had a plan for permanent structure, you would allow this to go in its current form? Or is it more one that you don't want to allow 25 foot in its current form with no future plan? Or what's the act?
We would not, I'm trying to answer your question. We would not allow 25 feet in a, in a kind of an open condition with a tarp over it. If they wanted to do the high pile of storage, we would want it to be in some sort of structure like this hoop building that's shown here.
But if they, if they said, we're going to put this in in the next two years, would it be okay with that? Or if we said it's going to be a one-year-old put this in?
That is up to the Commission to decide. As staff, we, we didn't feel like it was appropriate to recommend a condition like that. We just wanted to go for the straight denial because generally, we think, you know, how this site is going to operate, the, the storage needs to be in some sort of permanent structure, a little bit more permanent than what they're proposing. If the applicant wants to make that case and the Commission wants to grant that, that's up to them.
Any further questions from Commissioners?
What, what materials being stored? Sorry.
Uh, salt, road salt specifically. The applicant, they can speak all about it. They, they know a lot more about it than I do.
Okay. Thank you, Nick. The applicant may now come forth, speak your name and address, and you have 10 minutes.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the Commission. Wally Pelz, Pelz Design Services, 2323 Dixon Street, Des Moines, Iowa 50316. I'm a block and a half away from this site. Wanted to give you a quick scale of, I put it on Google Earth and I made the tarp green so you can see it because when I did the natural color of the tarp, it kind of blended in with the buildings. So if I could share this real quick. That should give you the scale. You can see alters. Nick already talked about where it's at. Realistically, what we're talking about is a road salt storage. Our dilemma is like twofold. So we're looking to expand our track spur. We have two spurs coming in. One's 819, the second one is 830. 830 only comes in halfway. 819 is an undersized track, so it can't carry enough weight. DOT has offered to give us a grant to improve that track. It's a part of their railroad improvement. And we have been working through the UP since October of 2021 to try and get this approved. So it brings us to this spot. We thought we'd be much further along. We're also on our fifth person from the UP because they've had turnover. So it's a slow, arduous process. We are not opposed to doing a permanent structure. However, we're, we would like to ask that the Commission give us a two-to-four-year window to get that done. We still don't know where track 830 will go. We have retained Via Rail, if you're familiar with them. They're a nationwide rail engineering company. They specialize in this and they are working with them to figure out where we're going to be. I do not want to put a footing for a structure where 830 might end up. So that is our request. I've had discussions with staff and they felt it was up to the Commission if you would grant that. I believe they were supportive of that kind of a suggestion. He's nodding his head no. You said yes before. No, I'm joking. Realistically, we're asking for your help in this matter because that's, that's where we're at. Really, we'd like to get to a hoop building because the people who work with the rock salt, they have to get out of their vehicles, untarp, get the material, retarp. That's not a great way to do it, but it gets us through to where we need to be till we can get to that hoop building. So that would be my request. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on storing this all.
If we were to, I know we got a couple more steps, but if we were to do a motion that had to do with that hoop building, is there a way, is there a way to, to write the motions that like is sort of subject to that track, like within six months of that new track are no more than four years from this date or something like that?
Yeah, I, I think we can commit to a timeline to that. What I would, here's my dilemma. The, all the rail projects that I've ever done have been two to three times longer than what was originally projected. I'm happy to do it once my rail is in. Then I think we can commit to a timeline, depending on when it hits in the year. You know, I truly don't want to do winter construction, you know, because let's, let's say they put the track in in October, November. I don't want to be trying to build in six months. So if we would have some flexibility of maybe a year from when track 830 gets extended, that, you know, by the Union Pacific, that would be ideal for us. And that would help tremendously in what we're looking to do.
And then, and then then, like, what's, what's an appropriate expectation for how long it'll take to get track number 831?
830.
830.
We're estimating two to four years for completion. And that's based on the information that we've gotten now. It's, it could be sooner. There's a lot going on to the north of us that UP is looking at as well. They're looking at their whole rail yard system. As you recall, when the city of Des Moines closed Hull Avenue and a couple other places, looking to augment the yards. I think we're already out of space because they're looking to expand again because rail is becoming more prevalent because it's a much more efficient way to transport. Right now, there's quite a few trucks making runs up here. I know for cement, it certainly is. So rail is the new, more, I mean, it's much more efficient. It's much more eco-friendly, less fuel. That's where we're at. So we're estimating two to four years, but we'd be happy to come back at any time, especially if we're going to have complaints. The one thing I did want to mention is if you're familiar with gravel roads, we use a salt solution to spray it, calcium chloride, so that it doesn't dust. Salt is not, it's an ionic compound. So it has a tendency to attract materials. So it's not a very dusty-type material. And it is rock salt, right? So you're talking that quarter-inch cube is what we're looking at typically. So hopefully, unless we have huge ones, but the tarp should hold it in place. Again, willing to do the, the structure at a time when I know where I can put it.
Are you going to use the 819 rail in the meantime?
The 819 is already in use to service the interior of the building. So the 830 is the one that brings in the salt now, which is that short one.
Okay. So what's on-site now? What material is it that's on-site now in, in the bunker that's been built?
Salt.
Okay. So that's going to sit there for two to four years? Or are you moving that?
No.
That's where I'm confused.
It'll get moved. So this, this is to supply the municipalities and anyone who's spread salt during icing events. It gets trucked in, it's mined somewhere from Kansas, brought in via rail, and then dropped off. The reason we're asking for more rail is because I'd like to have more cars to offload. And that's why we're asking for a larger storage capacity right now. Because I don't have the space to move the cars off. Otherwise, we sit and block the track. 819, which you can see it on our plan, 819 is, it feeds the building. So there's a whole bunch of doors on the back where the rails pull up. You don't even see what's in those materials. Those go straight off a fork into the building.
So the, the salt that's in the bunker now?
Correct.
How did that get there?
It comes into 830. There's a pit that's conveyed, and then it's loaded over into the bunker with a front loader.
Okay. So, and that's not a process that can be supported going forward? Or?
I'm, I guess.
So the 830 rail works now, right?
Right. What, why wouldn't you do that rather than waiting two to four years to build something? I guess I'm confused because...
We're looking for more capacity in the track. So right now, I can only get so many cars to unload off that track at a time because I'm limited in length off the main track. It's a very short track. It's also got a non-compliant curvature element to it, which is, means we're asking for exceptions. So I don't, I don't have a ton of area to work with. So I can bring in three, four cars a day during salt season. And then to get it out, it takes me so long to stockpile, right? Because if you're buying in peak season, salt goes up triple-priced. And then City of Des Moines is paying triple-priced, Des Moines Airport, I mean, that's why Des Moines Airport is buying their own, right? So that they can stockpile it. So this is actually feeding the municipalities. Their, their Skyline Salts customer base are the surrounding cities.
So the height of the material that is there right now is what?
Six feet.
Okay. So what you're asking for is the ability to go up to 25 feet?
We're asking the ability to go to 25 feet to meet customer needs because we logistically can't, I need to stockpile enough because I can't bring cars enough, fast enough to fill it because I don't have the capacity in the track.
Today, it's taller than six feet, though.
It's taller than the bunker?
Yes.
Do we have pictures?
I have a picture of it, if you'd like to see it.
I haven't been out there since the bunker got put in.
Okay. So it's currently higher than six feet being used?
It, it might be.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm unaware that that's happening.
I have a quick question. Is, so you're, you're applying for relief while you're making improvements to the facility here in the next two, four years, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So right now, we're just basically needing to allow this thing to go higher because we need to have enough inventory because the rate at which we can bring stuff in and out without extra track means we can't be financially operating sustainably with the single track that has a limited amount that can bring in and out. So we're not saying this is going to be 25 feet every day, all day. It's going to be 25 feet peak leading up to the time when it's going to be going back off, back off the site quickly too, right?
That's correct.
And I, I think.
So it'll ebb and flow. You'll see it, you'll see it rise and fall. I mean, it's no different than when you see from the Minats or Liberty Concrete down the road. You know, their, their stockpiles go taller and then they, you see them disappear, then they stockpile them up again. It's, it's going to be that same type of experience.
Well, when the rail gets put in?
When the rail gets put in, it's under the hoop building, so no one will see it.
And your pile won't need to be as large anyway because you're also...
Right. I mean, and asking staff, the purpose of, of limiting the height for dust control, right? To have materials not floating. With the tarp, we do not, we don't want to lose it. We don't want to have any injection of water or any contaminants into our salt. That's, that's a fact. And then, as I mentioned, salt is an ionic material that we use to spray gravel roads to collect. It'll trap the dust in the smaller particles. So again, I think we've accomplished it. It's a temporary fix, but we will, we're committing to that hoop building. I just can't give you an exact timing again because I don't control the railroad.
Yeah, I guess I got one. I got a couple of questions.
Oh, no, I was just saying that I, as someone who's dealing with a railroad project now, I feel your pain for they will tell you will do this and you never know when it's going to come. Then they show up and they don't, and will take extra years. But I guess my other question was, the 25-foot piece, do you have wind date on it to provide any confidence that this won't go away? Or is there anything that can, you can rate this type of, I mean, when we say tarp, there's the tarps we throw in our backyard, and I think this is a massive...
This is a massive, it's a heavy millage, like polytarp. The material is a rub, right? Mark, come up here and talk about your business.
While you're on your, while you're coming to the podium, this would kind of be similar to like some of the co-ops out in farmland where they're filling with corn and it puffs up and goes back down.
I suppose I have to, my name's Mark Arthofer. I'm the owner of Skyline Salt Solutions. So I, I do have carnal knowledge of all this. But as far as the tarp goes, we actually just started using this tarping system last year. I did a job out in Pennsylvania and I, and I come across this tarp. Your typical tarp that you see on most of these piles have ropes on them and sandbags and everything else. And, and you're right, when the wind comes up, they're flopping in the wind. They rip and go. This Wind Defender, it's a, it's a two-part system. So you put a polytarp on first, and then you put the Wind Defender, which is a fabric over top of it. And on that, you, you put your weighted sandbags down at the bottom. So there's not ropes, there's none of that stuff. That Wind Defender, it, it sticks like wood. I mean, it stays on there. And I mean, the name serves itself. It's Wind Defender, right? We went using that in all our terminals. We're the only one that does in the Midwest here right now on our salt piles. It's not, as far as cost for us, I mean, we're going to get a cost. It doesn't cost us any more money, but it actually stays put and it, and it keeps our product safe. So I mean, we do service, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to clarify. So instead of ropes going over the tarp, it's basically an entire fabric that goes over the tarp?
Right.
That is connected to the sandbags.
Yep.
I see. How is the entire, it seems so huge and heavy. How is that removed? Is it a?
We cut it as we go. So we always try to keep the face covered and stuff. So as, as you dig back into the pile, we, we cut the tarp off.
Okay.
So.
Okay. But like, are the machines moving the tarp? There's not people out there taking them up? It seems too heavy. Okay. Justin, did you have any more questions?
I think just a statement. So it'll be covered, it'll be contained. Is there, was there any other concerns from staff about this on safety-wise? Or is just strictly the, the height of it?
And dust containment, yeah.
Is there any other comparable facilities in Des Moines that we do allow this to?
I think Wally kind of mentioned a little bit earlier, like, there are some facilities, like, places around here that, that do, like, kind of if you follow my cursor here, Liberty Ready Mix is down here, and they do have really high piles of stuff. It's kind of, we were talking about, it's a legal non-conforming use. So if they were ever have to do a site plan, they'd have to cover it and store it appropriately. I think probably most of the facilities that we have around the city that have these piles of aggregate probably are not conforming to current standards. I think you could say that's accurate, but it is a pretty common industrial practice that we have in different parts of the city.
Any further questions from Commissioners?
Yeah, I have two quick ones. Wally, when you originally presented the design to the city, did you include the hoop house that would go in X years later? Or was that afterthought?
That came after we realized what the market is. We realized that the bunkers weren't going to be enough. And that we couldn't transport it fast enough.
Okay. And then another question is, does the city have the teeth to enforce that it gets done X months, year from completion of railroad?
Yeah, I was going to address that.
I'm kind of seeing some opportunistic.
Yeah. If the Commission is inclined, inclined to grant it for a temporary period, I do have concerns about tying it to the completion of that rail just because that gives staff one more thing to have to track. Whereas if it gets continued or, or approved until a date certain, even if they have to request an extension at the end of that date, then at least we have that in our system that an X date we check. Whereas if it's just six months after the railroad gets completed, we have no way of tracking that.
Wally, what, what do you think would be a fair date? Or we can discuss that.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to put it out, buddy. I'd be happy to put out our earliest estimate at two years right now, if that's okay with everyone. I think that's, we'll push and see what we can get done. And if we have to ask for an extension, we'll come humbly ask for an extension.
Okay. Thank you. Emily, did you have a question?
I was going to say, that seems fair. So maybe we can expedite the...
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't finished the process, Emily.
She has a baby to attend to.
So it appears the applicant is finished with the presentation. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in support of this project? Is there anyone?
I'm in support of it, and I make kind of different notes than...
Oh, you'll need to come forward and, and say your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Ben Arthofer with Skyline Salt Solutions. Home address or our corporate address?
I don't think it matters, with either one.
Okay. Our address is 165 West Side Court, Dubuque, Iowa. And just as you were talking, I know one of the concerns that came up is, is it permanently going to stay 25-foot tall? Well, I'm in the salt business. If it doesn't snow, there's a slight chance of that come spring. I will also be at home crying. But the intent is not to have it that way year round. This time of year, right now, we're stockpiling up to get ready for winter. We bring in via rail what our contracts are throughout the winter. Also, it was addressed about the pitcher of our salt pile that we currently have there now, waiting for this meeting to make sure that the variance goes through before I throw tarp on it because that's expensive. Needless to say, it's making me sick not having my material. that's expensive. Needless to say, it's making me sick not having my material tarp. So the sooner we can figure out yes or no, the better that is for me. Additionally, Mark did not answer, as far as with our tarp system, part of the reason we put our blocks up there is after we tarp it, we also take two-by-fours as a furring strip on the bottom of the blocks, tap con that in, so that on top of it being Wind Defender, it's also anchored to the wall until the time we make it back that far. We also talked about the time period, the two years, and then if we need to readdress at that point, gives us multiple things if we're able to move forward with the rail. Also, after two years of me being in the Des Moines market, that also allows me to work with my bank on financing for said building, because it sounds like everybody in here has bought a house. You need two years of proven record to be able to get that financing. And I think that covers about every miscellaneous question you guys brought up. Anything else for me?
That's like, good, thank you very much. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in support of this item? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this item? Or neutral? Okay. I will close the public hearing now and open it up to the commission for discussion and motions.
I'll make a really fast comment. Small business owner, always going to be a champion of businesses, who come in here with a plan, who want to do it right. We, we have plenty of people that come in here and apply for exemptions, and it doesn't have any large impact. This, this has large impact. So I'm very sympathetic and empathetic, and I'm going to vote to provide relief. So yeah, thank you guys for a good presentation.
Yeah, agreed with that. I don't know what the motion looks like exactly, but I'll move to get the relief and then the two-year check in with them. I don't know, is that enough?
Grant the Type II design alternative for a two-year period?
Sure. Yep, that sounds good. That's my motion.
I accept.
Okay, without, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? I think that covers everybody.
Motion passes 13-1.
Thank you. Are there any committee and directors' reports?
The only thing I was going to mention is that there's a 5:30 session next meeting on the Vision Zero Plan. John Davis, the city's tri, or the transportation engineer is going to be here to give that presentation.
Okay.
I got one more comment. Hey, guys, I just, I want to apologize for getting emotional. We get, we have a lot of people that come in here and make erroneous statements about slum lords, and th, those are offensive to me. I, I come from a black mother that housed all my family members who were struggling, and they could have been considered slum lords, but we helped them. And that, that's the family I come from. I hire people who are low-income. I'm going through a life change right now, so I just ask that y'all help me combat that BS. I don't want to hear it. The, the community has legitimate concern, and I worked hard to broker that, but I don't want to hear about slum lords. I don't want to hear about problematic people. That, that is offensive to me. So I ask that you guys work with me to stop that. And we address it, and we, we are solution-based and database on the decisions we make. But the rest of that, that, that has to stop. Please. But I, I love you all, and I appreciate you all. That hurt me tonight.
Great.
And yeah, again, I love you guys all.
Thank you, Justin. We are adjourned.